Okay, good evening everybody. Today is Tuesday November 18, 2025. This is a meeting, a regular meeting of the City Council of the city of Marina. Anita, can we please get a vocal?
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember McAdams. Councilmember Biella.
Here.
Mayor Protem Fisher.
Here.
Mayor Delgado.
Thank you. We have a quorum. City attorney, do we have any changes to the closed session agenda?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We do not have any changes to the closed session agenda.
Thank you very much. And we'll open it up to the for public comments for anybody here in the room or on Zoom. Seeing nobody, we'll close public comments and we'll go into closed session and we'll reconvene here at 6:30 PM. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Okay, welcome and good evening everyone.
Recording in progress.
We're gonna go ahead and get started with the open session component of this Marina City Council regular meeting on Tuesday, November 18th, 2025. We've been in closed session since 5:00 PM and our tradition is our city attorney Renee Ortega will summarize for everyone what we addressed in closed session. Thank you Renee.
Sure, yeah, thank you mayor. So council provided direction in closed session but took no reportable action. That's my report.
If everyone at this point could stand for a moment of silence and then Jonathan Smith is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you Jonathan and to everyone in America Troop 134 and PAC 135. You guys rock. Okay, what would you like? Sure, come on up PAC and come on down city council. Recently Marina lost one of its most dedicated residents Patty Sadler Ratchaw. She passed away on October 30th, 2025. She passed away on October 31st. Some things are more divisive in town than they need to be. Approximately in the end of October Patty left us physically. She had numerous recognitions and awards. She was a friend to many and in love with our city of Marina and dedicated a lot of her life professionally and personally to the city of Marina. She taught for many years at Learning for Life High School. She was an active member of the planning commission for 22 years. She did a lot of, she made a lot of contribution while volunteering on the 20th and the 25th anniversary of our city. She was on the historical committee of the Marina Foundation. She was a long-term member of the Rotary Club and she had many awards given to her by the Kiwanis Club, prior mayors, anniversary committees. So Patty was definitely part of the fabric of our city and it was really regret that she has passed on, but she leaves behind a lot that she contributed to the city that we all benefit from. And so we'll adjourn tonight's meeting when the time comes in her honor, but we wanted to give this adjournment, remembrance and a certificate. give this adjournment, remembrance and a certificate to her family. And Nancy Amadeo, a former city council member, would also like to speak regarding about Patty. Thank you, Nancy, for being here and for everyone here, her friends and family to appreciate and honor Patty's memory.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Patty had no family. She had no children. She was an only child. So she adopted us and the us is there in the back of the room. She considered all of us her family. We dined together. We went on vacations together. We had lots of fun and we worked on a variety of committees with her. I was privileged to be on the Planning Commission with her and she was my mentor for the first few years I was on the Planning Commission. She really took me under her wing, explained a lot of documents that I didn't understand when I started and she was that way with all of her family, her family. She always stepped up. Patty was known to have a very strong will, but it was one of the things that at least I admired about her and I think everybody over there would say the same thing. She lived life her way and right to the very end. Her desire was that she would stay in her home till the day she died and at 97, that dream came true for her as well. So I do hope the council and the citizens of this city, when they look around and think how wonderful this place is to live, that they acknowledge Patty as being a huge part of who we are. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nancy. And thanks to everyone for coming tonight in memory of Patty. Next, we're going to have a city Marina. Sure, of all of Patty's fans, friends, do you want to come up and take a picture? Council, if you'd step down. Okay, so now we're gonna have a presentation from C Monterey, formerly known as the Monterey Convention and Visitors Convention Bureau.
Our presentation, I think, is already set up. We have the clicker here. Okay. Second behind. All right, it was in my office too. Well, thank you, Mayor, council members. Mr. Long, it's good to see you again. I appreciate the opportunity to come for you. My name is Rob O'Keefe. I'm the president and CEO of C Monterey, the Tourism Bureau for the county, and wanted to come by and give you an update on a few things, including how we finished last year and a few things that are coming up. So in the interest of time, I'll keep this brief, but I'm always happy to stop mid-sentence and/or answer questions at the end. So here is, let's see, all right, just it's a wee bit, but not bad. So this is a snapshot of what C Monterey has done in the last fiscal year overall. Now you know that we work with 10 different jurisdictions, including the city of Monterey, the county, the other cities. Happy to say, Sand City is coming into the fold more formally with the opening of their two new hotels. And this is a snapshot of what C Monterey's sales and marketing programs do for the year. The demand that we influence, we do, you know, we do one thing in focus and that is generate demand for people to come here. There can be leisure travelers. There could be people coming here for meetings and conferences who tend to stay longer, do more, spend more, and oftentimes don't bring their cars. And we're big fans of traffic mitigation and sustainability overall. International travelers, and this is a snapshot of everything we did in the last year in terms of generating demand, how that demand translates into dollars, revenue. You'll see there in the upper left. We influenced $1.1 billion in visitor spending, so we track how much people spend while they're here. 775 leads, conferences, and then the ones that booked and then the dollars they spent. So people who came here for meetings last year spent over $86 million. So that's the big picture. The next picture, and we do this every year, twice a year, for each of our jurisdiction partners, and you've already received this, but I wanted to take a moment to just talk you through it. We take the pie that, imagine the previous slide was the pie. This is Marina's slice of the pie. And we use a number of different third-party resources and research firms to calculate who gets what in terms of what we're doing or creating in terms of demand. What you can see there is for the city of Marina, of that 1.1, we generated 46 or 46.3 million in influenced visitor spending. And you can see other parts and other ways that were generating demand. I would draw you, it also shows the investment that you made. Last year you invested $115,000 as a jurisdiction investment partner. Because of that, you were able to, we were able to working with you to generate over $184,000 in publicity. Number of members, as of the end of the last fiscal year, is 56 businesses in the city of Marina are members of C Monterey for free because of the investment that you make. And then you can see some other data up there. One I'm gonna talk about in a minute more is meetings and conferences here. Last year, we generated 52 leads for meetings and conferences to come here, only one booked. Our team is working on that. We gotta do better than that. And I think there's a couple of things happening there. One of our biggest partners and a board member is the Sanctuary Beach Resort, and they went through some changes in their sales team. So we're working with a new sales director who we worked with many years before. She just started a couple, a few months ago. We need to dig into that because Marina is definitely a place where we can bring more conferences. And so that's a point of interest for this year. Just taking a look of where we're at, we have a new website and obviously Marina is a big part of that, our social media program. We have a new Marina destination page. What we're doing is we're taking each of our jurisdiction partners and we're creating their own, call it a sub-brand under that umbrella. I often use Nike as the brand and Nike has product lines. Nike has the Michael Jordan shoe, the Serena Williams shoe, somebody pickleball shoe, if not now, soon, I'm sure. So we're doing the same thing. Monterey is the brand, but you have your Marina product line, your seaside product line, your Carmel by the Sea, and each is distinct and special and we're taking bigger steps in that direction, which we're gonna talk about. We got some input from a couple of you recently and we're gonna talk about that in just a minute. See, I should have clicked it one more time to make it activate that, but we'll keep going. Public relations is a big focus and Marina is great, great fodder for public relations because of the diversity of the things that there are to do and experience here in the city. So we get and we make a lot of, a lot of hate with the, with the public relations that we're doing. And just in the first quarter of the year, we had six inclusions with Marina in public major stories from CBS to right of others, the Sun, international coverage. I think I have a nice post here coming up. Now let's see if this works. This is from CBS and if I click this just right, let's see what happens.
But nothing spells slow travel quite like the ocean. The Sanctuary Beach Resort here in nearby Marina has rooms overlooking the dunes and Pacific. There are steps from cauldrons lit up every night at sunset. Relaxed activities include beach walks and oyster shell decorating. Nearby gourmet restaurants like Che Nour and Carmel utilize local ingredients for leisure.
So you can see in there, that was a major, that was a bigger story. I think the total runtime was about three minutes, 30 seconds, but you see how we mix it all together. And that was a nice, big, national piece on CBS National News. So we're very happy about that type of placement because we're trying to reach people from a lot further away, past our drive markets. And I'm gonna talk about 1,000 new rooms coming online soon. We've got to get folks coming here that didn't even know we exist. We've got to find new ways to reach people, inspire them to wanna come here, to visit here, to stay here, spend money here. I talked a little bit about business development. In the first quarter of the year, we have developed our sales team. We have a salesperson in Chicago, Dallas, and LA, and now San Francisco, and their focus is on corporate meetings, incentive meetings, association meetings, and we want to get those meetings here. A meeting, person traveling for meetings spends 158% the amount of someone just coming here for leisure travel. Very valuable, very competitive. We compete from, with the smalls like Nappos and the Sonomas and Santa Barbas, but because of the nature of our destination, we also compete with Palm Springs, San Diego, San Francisco. So we kinda gotta work both angles. We had 17 group leads for representing over 2,200 room nights just in the first quarter in Marina. Now we gotta dig into that. Can we book those leads? Can we convert those leads? And that's something, like I said earlier, is a point of focus for us in this current year. Things that are coming up, this year we're launching a new program, two new programs with arts. We're partnering with the Arts Council for Monterey and we're going to really focus on public art displays, whether they're murals or other public art displays, and not just the art, but we wanna put QR codes on everything because we wanna tell the story of the artist and the story behind the art. So we're really focused on that. History, heritage and culture, very important to who we are as a destination. So a big program we're doing, maybe you've heard of America 250. It's the year-long celebration, national celebration for the 250th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence. We can do better than that. We're going to do better than that. Not America 250, Monterey 1000. So we're going to focus on 1,000 years of history, going all the way back, bringing everything forward. The things that you can do, the things that you can do today are rooted in the past. We're gonna bring that to new light. We're also focused on the Super Bowl. It's gonna be up the road. We wanna make, we'll have some fun with that. FIFA's coming. Highway one is gonna be open. I'm always knocking wood when I say this because they're saying March and we hope it's March and let's pray it's March, but it depends on the weather and we are into the winter or the rains now. A new Chicago flight, that's a big focus for us, starting next March or May, rather. Again, we gotta get people coming here from further away and to have that flight in Chicago gives us a nice, solid foothold in the Midwest. And then regional identities, and that's what I was talking about a little bit earlier, giving each jurisdiction its own identity, its own vibe. And that's coming to light, including creating videos for each jurisdiction, including Marina. 1,000 new guest rooms. So we have 300, over 300 opening in January. The Kimpton in Pacific Grove. You've got the two properties in Sand City. We keep talking about the Grand Hyatt in Seaside. That's going to happen, probably 2028. That's another 330 rooms. That's 600 of those 1,000 rooms. You've got at least two or three properties opening in Marina in the next, we look at 2030 as our sort of our horizon, time horizon. And Harvey Dodd was pretty much as good as his word and he's got plans. We met with him on those plans and then you've got other properties opening, the Main Gate, Campus Town. We're gonna have an increase in hotel rooms. The focus for us as an organization, and I think it concerns all of us, is how do you bring new travelers here to fill those rooms without cannibalizing the business that you already have? We have to tap into new markets. We have to reach into new places and we need to find people who don't even know you can come here for a meeting, a conference, or just to visit. So we're really, really focused on a lot of what I've been talking about with the air service and the new ways of reaching CBS National News. That's how you do it. We gotta keep on doing it. So from a regional identity standpoint, developing what you're looking at is what we're thinking about. This is in its early stages for the city of Marina. We were fortunate to get some feedback from council members, Viola and Fisher, and we talked about what makes Marina distinct, special, unique, that are, and inspiring, that are going to get folks here. So we're developing this, this content. So you've kinda got your own brand under that umbrella that we talked about, and then we're gonna develop content in the spring. We're gonna be shooting video here. We've already got a lot of content over the years, but we're gonna be shooting new video to develop that. So when you come to the Marina page on our website, you're gonna see a video that might be 60, 90 seconds long and it'll be a snapshot of what makes Marina special. That's coming in the spring. We still have a lot more time to talk about that. Adding into our content, I recently got a lot of new photos from you all that help us populate all that content that we're pushing out there and showing unique sides of Marina. So we definitely appreciate that. Talked about the new Chicago flight. We're advertising in Chicago, two new markets for us, Chicago and Austin, Texas. Chicago, we're gonna have a direct flight. We already have a direct flight in Dallas. We think there's more business in Texas, so we're starting to focus on Austin. We're also advertising in Seattle, Denver, San Diego, Las Vegas, and a variety of other markets. And we keep pushing our messaging. We call it sweep to the east. We're pushing further out. We're not just a drive market anymore. We're focused on the Midwest. We're focused on the East Coast. Particularly with PR and social media, we can have a national footprint in terms of promotion and even international. And we just have to continue to make that work harder for us. And we have a new event strategy. So how are we gonna fill those 1,000 new rooms and keep the business that we already have? Events are a big part of this. We're about to hire a firm to do an assessment of all the events, all the events we're currently doing and the event space that we have to work with. There's two parts to this. How do we make the events that are already coming here work harder for us? So it's not just a race at Laguna Seca, it's a race, a race at Laguna Seca plus, plus, plus. It's not just the men's open at Pebble Beach. How do we get that? How do we get those people coming here to spread out and do more? So this assessment process is gonna look at those types of events and provide recommendations on how we can stretch those out. They're gonna be looking at event venues and spaces and places where we can put things and come back with recommendations. We wanna make existing events work harder. We wanna attract new events, but we wanna attract them when we need them in the off-season. We wanna plant them sort of surgically when we're gonna drive demand in places and spaces where we need them. So that's just starting now and we'll have more to talk about on events in the spring. And that's, that's a years-long process, obviously, but it's something I'm excited about because that's how you get folks, new folks, coming here and doing more, staying longer and spending more. And then community relations, you're probably more familiar with Alyssa Rendon. She came back from maternity leave recently for a day. She found a really great opportunity where she can work remote and she can be home with a baby, so we're wishing her well. So that's one of the reasons you're seeing me tonight, so me and her. But we're gonna continue to focus on that. We'll be posting a new job for that position. We now have 75 active businesses. We've done door knocking with council members to get out there. We'll do what it takes and we've done it in a variety of jurisdictions. It's free. Half the time, people don't believe it. Like, well, what's the catch? Right? You mean after 90 days, do I have to pay something? It's free. You're a jurisdiction investing partner and so we have to sometimes just get out there and shake it up a little bit. And it's been successful because we've increased membership from, I think, 59 at the end of last year to we're already at 75 and we're gonna keep working on that because it's good for us, it's good for you, it's good for the people coming here. And we really wanna stay focused on that. So that is a snapshot of the many, many, many things we're doing. And I also, I wanna say thank you again for the investment that you make, the time that you put in. I appreciate that. We have the general manager of Sanctuary on our board. Council member Visher is also on our board as an advisor. That connectivity that we've really grown and I appreciate it, Mr. Long. The time that you've put in, we've put in together. I think we've come a long way in a short period of time. So thank you and I'm open for questions.
Thank you, Rob. When you mentioned inclusions, what, what range of coverage does that bring for Marina in a particular inclusion?
So in a, in a press story?
Yeah, you said six inclusions for Marina.
So an example would be like that CBS. So an example would be like that CBS story. So you got a, you got a portion of that and we might include Carmel Valley and a couple others. But we have another firm, a company called Cision, that slices and dices precisely who got what and who was included in what. And that's in print, that's in online, and that's in broadcast as well.
So it could be a word, it could be a sentence, it could be a 10-second piece of a video, could be a wide range of coverage.
Yeah, it could be a wide range. If, if it's just the word, it's that we, that we're not counting that. It's going to, has to be substantive. You got to look at it and say, yeah, yep, that's okay. You got us in there. And we're happy to pull things for you to look at if, if ever of interest.
Okay. And then you had a page that listed events that were mostly more than 2,000 people. But for events that have more than 1,000 guests coming here, what's Marina's potential role?
I'm going to have a better answer for you that as soon as we do this study. But that's what we're looking for because it could be 500 people. It could be smaller events. We think that you've got a lot of potential just with the existing space. But what's going to happen in part of this process is the folks that we're working with, they're going to come to you and ask you, what do you see? What potential? And what are the permitting hurdles that are included? What are the zoning issues that are included? So the answer, I guess, is I don't know the exact potential yet, but that's something that we want to find out.
Okay. Yeah, you had those numbers of different events that have more than 2,000 that just brought to mind, you know, how would Marina get, gets, you know, be participant? And then you mentioned the Marina vibe. Do you already have a sense of what the Marina vibe is or are you developing that?
We're developing that, but we have a sense that was informed from some council member discussions that we've had. Evolving, diverse. We've talked about adventuresome, the broad scope of things that there are to do here. Diverse and multicultural keep popping up, obviously to the top, but also evolving. There's the vibe, and this is part of what we, what we're working on, but just coming from me, there's an energy here. There's a development that's taking place or on the rise. There's momentum and acceleration that's taking place here. Now that's something for our folks and our friends at our ad agency and they're trying to morph and shape that, but we're wide open for input.
Okay. Can you go back to the slide? You had a list of hotel rooms under construction and some in planning. And one of those was the Imogen Parkway Hotel for 100 rooms. So I just wanted to ask you a couple of questions about that slide. When it listed the Imogen Parkway Hotel for 100 rooms, it was my understanding that it was going to be 300 rooms, 200 plus 100. And so I'm wondering, maybe you named them something different on that list than I know their name to be. So down there, the second to last, Imogen Parkway Hotel 100. And our city manager, can you weigh in? I thought that we were, we were thinking about that hotel being a 200 plus 100.
And I should have said, sorry, apologies. This is already dated. This is from the beginning of the year and these things get, if we pay to get them updated, they change all the time. And part of this, this is a third-party firm that put this together for us, but I've seen three of these in the last three years and no two are the same. So there's, there's a lot of different sources for this, but then I'm sorry to interrupt you.
So the details can change, but your point is that you have 600 rooms under construction, which aren't shown here, but 300 of them are. And then you have, you know, over 1,000 others that are in the planning.
Yeah.
So your point is that we have many hundreds of hotel rooms on the horizon planned to add to our market. And so you're trying to match that with visitors.
Yeah, we've got to draw the demand to fill those rooms. And some of these on here, like the American Tin Canary, it's probably been on this for 25 years. Main Gate and the, the master plan communities in Seaside, I think some of those, those footprints have hotels, but nothing secured yet. It's talk about, but nothing's done. What I know, or what I at least feel, I, my, my feeling is when it comes to hotels in Monterey County, they started rumor phase, then they go to gossip phase, then they go to financing maybe phase, then they go to financing for sure phase. And by the time you get to groundbreaking, you're not even done there. But overall, we've got more than 1,000 rooms coming and 600 I can point to and say, I was at that groundbreaking. You got 300 opening in, in a few months. That Grand Hyatt's 330. Salinas is bringing on at least one for sure, as I've heard, and probably two or three. So.
You forgot the litigation phase and the recession stage.
You're right, you're right, you're right. I got to add those to my spectrum.
All right, let's go to Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. O'Keefe, for being here and for your presentation. I'm always inspired by your passion and enthusiasm for bringing guests to our region. Something that I would love to see added to our identity that really stands us out is how family-oriented the city of Marina is. We have the best parks and the only pump track in the, in the region. So especially when you're getting those guests that are driving in, they're usually bringing their scooters and bikes anyways, and so send them to the pump track. I wanted to commend your team on the 75 Marina businesses that are now members and receiving the free resources and exposure. I remember that like it was boots on the ground. So thank you to my colleagues and I, I'm sure you're continuing that effort. So, and it is something, I mean, that is part of our investment and, and I want that, those benefits to go to, to our small businesses. So thank you for that. And then on your way home, I would encourage you to drive through the promenade and take a look at all the exciting new businesses and restaurants that are happening there. And so in addition to highlighting our beaches and trails, I hope that, you know, you can also consider encouraging visitors to shop and dine there at the promenade and of course in, in regular Marina. But they also put up their holiday decorations and it's quite stunning. So thank you so much for being here.
I'm, I'm happy to be here and I love it. It's a, this is, this is what I was meant to do, I think. But I can add just something to what you said about the promenade with the dunes. To get that Chicago flight, we had one of their flight analysts come here. He was running the marathon, the half marathon way back. And instead of putting him in a room with PowerPoint about the development that's taking place here, we put him in a car and we drove him around. And we drove through and said, see for yourself what's happening here, the residential growth, the retail growth, what's happening? And I think that was very influential in the decision-making for United. It's apparent, it's happening and you got to see it to feel it. And if you feel it, you make decisions like they made. So.
All right, thank you. Let's go to Councilmember Biola.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, thank you very much. It's very enjoyable to hear so much good things about Marina. And, and I was really wanting to say thank you for being open to the input from the council because we know Marina and we're sort of the gem that's hidden from everyone. And so you've been very, very receptive, you and your staff and Alyssa, to, to really hearing what, what we have here. And one of the constraints, of course, we, we worked on some things, you know, about describing Marina and we have so much coming. So we had to then kind of back off and say, what, what do we put on the website for Sea Monterey today? Because it was really hard because we had so much that we wanted to say, including all these massive, you know, playgrounds for families and stuff. And we just couldn't say it because we'd have to say in the future, coming 2026, 27. It is like we had so many of those things. So, but, but even despite all, all of the new developments not being able to be advertised, we, we think of ourselves as so special. And so we were trying to highlight that and your staff has, have helped to pull that out. And so, you know, any of the input from council, certainly they're very receptive to it because they can only put on there what, what we know to be Marina. So thank you very much for that. And, you know, we have many things, of course, and, and you're going to specify things like, like the Equestrian Center, that kind of stuff on, on, because you're just giving us the overview.
Yes, yes.
You know, the pump track and stuff. We've mentioned all of these things, you know, that are currently in. And actually in the promenade, since you mentioned it, it has now a Fort Ord Military History Wall, which we just dedicated on. And it has a dog tag mural and then that massive, beautiful marine mural on the theater. Is it just worth seeing, you know, if you're going to the promenade? So things like that, that would be so special if we could capture all of that as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I think where you, I, it was Wayne Gretzky who said, don't go to where the puck is, go to where the puck will be. And you're kind of in this really advantageous place where you don't want to ignore the puck is, but you really got a lot going on where it's going. We want to capture that, that, that energy of, of next level. And that's attractive to people who are looking for places to go. They like off the beaten path, but they also like things where they know they're going to go there and have a variety of things to do. And, and Marina is really, the, the star of Marina is brightening ever, every day. I just was over there, my wife and I were over at the dunes, the Sunday before Veterans' Day. And I'm just amazed. I feel like I, every time I'm there, it's just grown. I mean, you can see it literally. So lots of exciting things happening.
Yes, and I just wanted to mention, because we don't take credit for it as a, as a city, but the unexpected business from South Korea that was here at Asian Market, there are still busloads of visitors that come just to, for Marina, just to be in that site because it is an international kind of recognized thing. But we in Marina, who we were the stars in it, all of our, you know, our residents, but we don't realize that that was a really, this is a tourist draw and we're not aware of it ourselves.
No question.
Yeah, so things like that. So, yeah, thank you so much for your input and your energy.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kathy. Mayor Protem Vischer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. O'Keefe, for the presentation. And yes, when we had our meeting with your staff, they, they didn't approve of my wording, Marina is exploding, it should be evolving. But yeah, it, it, there's so much happening.
We mean the same thing.
That's why we need professionals for this. And yeah, artwork, we do have artwork, of course, downtown some and then at the dunes. And the dunes has a QR code with a art walk on their website. So we can make this all connect. And, and we should not forget our downtown businesses. And that's why we, with door knocking, we concentrated on that for the, we did a coupon book for the 50th anniversary. Due to the time constraints, it was a little bit thinner than we would like, but we can, we can work on this to repeat this. And, so yeah, no, and I'll just say one more thing. Oh yeah, and also we will take photos for the businesses. If, if they want us to, you know, they, we take the photos or your staff does, we'll help them to get on the website. And just about the last time, the last thing, when we, at one of the meetings, we were talking about new logos and I said for Marina, it should be a horse skydiving out of a Joby aircraft. That's Marina, so.
We're going to work on that.
So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks again, Rob, for being here. Thank you, Lizbeth, for those comments.
Thank you all.
Have a wonderful evening. Okay, next we have council and staff announcements. Staff, do you have any announcements? Our finance director, Tori Hanna, is coming forward. Hello, Tori.
Good evening. And I have just a quick slide to share with you. I'm just very excited to announce that we're very getting, that we're getting very close to launching what was called See Click Fix. It's a app that will allow us to, that will allow residents to report issues such as potholes. You can set up an account and receive updates or you can report things anonymously. But it will also have things where you can access, immediately access the city website, schedule recreation classes, or also find out about community events. And we are anticipating launching this hopefully in December. We're to the point where we have selected what our app logo will be, which you're seeing at the very bottom on the left-hand side. And then you'll have a splash screen, which is a picture of the beach. And then you'll move to the basic app screen where we'll have buttons where you can go to different locations and file a request. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Tori. Any more from staff? Okay. City Manager, Lane Long?
Just want to update council, our citizens advisory committee, let's look at the city facilities issue. We had our first meeting last night, 13 people applied to join the committee and, and we invited everyone to attend and they all attended. We had a, a wonderful meeting last night. We'd met here at 5:30 and the first part was we did a tour of the city facilities, which most people hadn't done before. And I think this is the end result, we're going to do more tours for the public on that. But it was very enlightening to everyone on the tour. After that, we had, we met till about 8:30, had a really good discussion, a lot of feedback. We talked about what their perceptions are, why they believe that Measure Youth failed, what things they would like to see. And, and so it was a good, good meeting. We will be seeing the council, the names of all their participants and which districts that they're from. We also had a PowerPoint presentation that we'll also send to the council. Our next meeting is December 1st and the committee wanted to talk about different potential sites and wanted some more details about city facilities. Our facilitator, Ryder Smith, with Trepeby Smith facilitated it and it went very well. Comments from everyone in the committee was, they really appreciated Ryder facilitating the event. So it was very successful. They appreciated that council set them up as an independent group and, and they are moving forward with that.
All right, thank you, Lane. Let's go to Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. Small Business Saturday is coming up on November 29th and I want to encourage the community to come out and support all of the incredible small businesses that we hear, have here in Marina, that make us such a vibrant, welcoming and resilient city. Small businesses are the heart of our local economy. They create jobs, activate our neighborhoods and reinvest directly in our community. And also just to think about, you know, think about services. We have lots of nail salons, hair salons. So there's different ways that we can support small businesses, even if it's by purchasing gift certificates at some of our restaurants, et cetera. So it's that time of the season and I look forward to definitely supporting our small businesses.
Thank you, Jenny. Mayor Protem Vischer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't see the rec department here, so I'll, I'm not enthusiastic as they can do it, but the Thanksgiving Community Meal is coming up on Thanksgiving Day from 11 till 2, completely free in, in the community center here across the parking lot. And it's, it's so much fun. It's amazing to see people eat and, and talk together. And volunteers are still needed, volunteers for the day before between five and seven and different shifts on the day itself. So anybody who would like to volunteer, please register on the website. And also on the website is a link now for the 50th anniversary logo items, logo merchandise is the word. Clear bags, picnic blankets, pants, water bottles, and I forget a whole bunch of other things. And only this month, it's 50% off if you order three or more items, which is below our cost. So this is such a good deal. I don't know why we do this. So anyway, go online and yeah, there's a good, just click on it and then the code is also on there. But when you check out, you use anniversary 50. Don't tell anybody else. But yeah, three, and it's really, I ordered, my neighbors are probably not here, I ordered as a holiday gift, so yeah. So anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Lizbeth. I'd like to mention that there's an ongoing effort by the five Marina principals of Marina Schools and other administrators in those schools, such as vice principals, in coordination with some of the administrative staff at the Monterey Peninsula Unified School District Office to join better our community in Marina with our schools in Marina so that students and teachers get more of what they need, including a stronger connection to our community and that our community is more aware and participating in school events and things like that. And so once a month, there is a committee meeting at the high school where these people come together and Mayor Protem Vischer and I attend those. And then on a different day every month, a subcommittee of that committee meets to talk more about the details of how to match needs in the schools with abilities coming from the community. And so we hope that we continue to discuss that over the years. But there was a two-day workshop on Halloween and the day before Halloween at the library and at Miss Damagio Park, attended by some 40 members of the school district and the community. and the community in trying to launch this partnership between schools and the non-communities, commute, non-school community. So more to come on that. Veterans Day was very active in Marina and veterans represent an important slice of our community, as do schools, which I just mentioned. So on Veterans Day, the American Legion did their annual, every year ceremony to honor veterans. And it's, it's very, it's a very beautiful ceremony and everybody gets a free, good lunch there. And then the Veterans Transition Center had what they call the Jamboree, basically a festival on Veterans Day out at the VTC's parking lot on Imgen Parkway. And then at four o'clock, the Shay Holmes had the dunes unveiling of the Veterans Wall. And Councilmember Kathy Bialla spoke at that. And Kathy, I'm done saying what I want to say, but I thought maybe you could mention that, what, how that, how that event was, how it went.
Sure. It, it really had a great attendance. At first I was thinking, wow, we're going to have to bring everybody from the brass taps in order to have a crowd, but it, it was very well attended and lots of veterans in kind of their hat and uniforms were there. And it, it really is a very, it's right in front of brass taps, the Fort Ord history wall. So easy to go. It's almost like a mini museum, except it's outdoor. And so go to the brass tap, turn around and you'll see this wall. And it covers from the early history to World War II, to the Korean War, to the Vietnam War, I mean, and the Gulf War. So it's really a wonderful snapshot about what, how Fort Ord contributed to, you know, the city of Marina's history. So in a, in a snapshot, please go out there. There's also a mural with dog tags as you're going down towards the Trader Joe's. Look to see, to find that as well. And please go to see that wonderfully in, in front of this theater, this wonderful mural, huge mural of the ocean life in this area. It's beautiful. So please go see, just go to that area and you'll find lots of things to, to see and do there. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay. So now we're going to move on to our, Edri. Sorry, Edri.
No worries. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, an update for Imgen Parkway. Artwork is underway. We have the manufacturing sets. It's going to actually be local instead of out of town. So installation will be expedited. Also, traffic control for the next few nights, Tuesday night, tonight and Thursday night, will be a full closure of the roadway between 7:00 PM and 6:00 AM. We'll also be doing that on Sunday, Monday and Tuesday, again, 7:00 PM to 6:00 AM. A full closure of Imgen Parkway in order to install all of the striping. So if you look on the website now, you'll actually see the contractors putting in the stenciling for the striping now. And they'll be doing that tonight and on Thursday night with the design team. And then Sunday, Monday, Tuesday nights, they'll be doing the final striping work. So before the Thanksgiving holiday break, weather dependent, we'll have the entire corridor striped and ready for the holiday traffic. That's, please always visit imgenparkway.com for the latest information. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Edri. Okay. So now if those announcements are complete, we'll move on to public comment on anything that's in our, included in our consent agenda or anything that's on your mind that's not on the rest of our agenda tonight besides the consent agenda. So public comment on consent agenda and other issues that you might be thinking about. We'll start with anyone in the room here and present. Come on up. You have up to three minutes.
Hi. So I'm the Cub Master for the Cub Scout Pack. Just to let you guys know, we have grown. We have exploded. Basically, what, what our pack here in Marina, what we were doing is we would focus on the military, but we would go from 20 to 30, then we would drop down to about five because, you know, in the military, they move every year. So we focused it more on the community. We focused it more on seaside and especially Marina. And I just want to say that our pack, if this was on a Monday, this whole area would have been packed. We have about 45 families right now. About 60% of them are from Marina. So just wanted to let you guys know. And also recently, our scouts took time to learn about, on how to be a good citizen. They discussed the importance of showing respect for others and helping their community, following rules that keep everyone safe and standing up for what is right, even when it is not always easy. They learned that citizenship is, is not just about significant actions, but about the small, everyday choices we make, like being kind, being trustworthy, doing our best to make our home schools and neighborhoods better, a better place to live. And to let you know, our scouts did not, did not just learn these ideas. They lived them through service projects, teamwork and practicing, good decision-making. They showed that citizenship begins with each of us choosing to make a positive difference. They participated in the Marina Coastal Cleanup over on Marina State Beach. And they helped remove a fence out over at Toro Park. We went camping there. It was, it was really fun. Got a lot of families out there. And they filled up Christmas boxes with toys, school supplies and personal items for childrens that are in need. They collected food and they donated to the local pantry here in Marina. I believe we're, just got a lot more food in my car. I mean, I think I probably got about 300 pounds more food. I believe we're over 1,200 pounds of food donated just to the local pantry. I forget what it's called. It's over at the Episcopal Church. And, and just last week, they volunteered for the Veterans Day by holding out, by handing out programs to, in the Veterans Day ceremony. Cub scouting is all about building character, learning new skills and discovering that each scout has something important to contribute. Every meeting, every outing and every adventure helps our scouts grow to, into confident, caring young people. These scouts are learning to lead, serve and strive for their best selves, contributing to their community. And most importantly, I wanted to thank, you know, all the leaders, all the parents and all the volunteers who make scouting possible and to our, and to, of course, all of our scouts. We're, you know, as a community, you know, as just everything.
Excuse me, sir. I hate to do this.
Yeah.
First of all, can you tell us your name?
My name is Chris.
Chris.
Yeah.
Chris, you're out of time, so I have to ask you to.
Well, we want to thank you, you know, for everything. And yeah, thank you so much.
Thanks, Chris. Good to see you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Quincy Ella Shakasha and I'm a youth ambassador with the Village Project's Mind Shift Stigma Reduction Campaign. The stigma, the stigma reduction campaign, also known as the SRC, is a part of the Californian Youth Behav- Behavioral Health Initiative, CYBHI, a statewide effort focused on improving youth mental health and wellness. Our goal is simple, to break the stigma around mental health and make it easier for young people to talk about what they're feeling and what they're going through. We do this through youth-led clubs, art outreach and peer education that reminds students that it's okay to not be okay.
My name is Chanise Wilmack. One part of us being youth ambassadors is our Word of the Month campaign, a system where each student, a part of our stigma reduction programs, shares mental health challenges with their school in hopes of students coming forward and sharing similar experiences. Right now, our Word of the Month campaign is in 10 schools across Monterey County, reaching over 6,000 youth. Each word, like anxiety, depression and negative self-talk, help us start conversations about what it means to care for our minds and each other.
My name is Shelby and as youth ambassadors, we're proud to say that the work happening here in Monterey County is being recognized across California. You might've seen our bus ads on MST, spreading positive mental health messages throughout our community. We also had the opportunity to co-host the California Department of Public Health Stigma Reduction Convening, where youth voices helped guide conversations on how to make mental health support more accessible and exclusive. Our campaign is now being used as a model for other programs statewide, showing that young people aren't just the future of mental health advocacy. We're leading it now. Every club we start and every conversation we speak helps build stronger, more, and a more supportive community. That is how real prevention begins.
Thanks to all three of you youth ambassadors. We appreciate that.
Hello and good evening. Good evening. I'm Kashanza Delaquadra, the Marina Police Officer Association President. Don't know if it's the right time to plug it, but we are also doing a toy drive with the Marina Police Activities League, working with Parks and Rec and the local schools and I believe one of, a few of our churches. So if you guys can, thank you very much, Protem Vischer, for coming out last Saturday. We'll be holding a booth again this Saturday at one front of Famous Footwear next to Target. So if you guys want to donate some toys or anything, please come down. We'd really appreciate it. The second part of that, or I should say the other part of why I came over here, just a little informative piece from the Marina Peace Association. The OSHA's worked really diligently these past three weeks. And so far, we've gotten a handful of firearms, at least over 10, some bomb-making materials off the street, as well as some people that have some plans to use those. We've worked with some other agencies around the county and thank you for all their help. Just want to say thank, to thank them and to thank those people, the city of Marina, as well as the council for you guys' continued support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here tonight in person who would like to speak? Come on up. All right. Let's go to the folks online. If anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand. We'll give you a moment before we close public comment. Okay. We'll close public comment. Thanks for those of you who did comment. And now we'll move on to our consent agenda. Does any member of council have any questions, comments or want to pull anything? Now, I did want to mention that 10L will be pulled. It doesn't need to be on the agenda. So it's 10L, 10L. 10L1, sorry. That regards the firearm and ammunition sales businesses. Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to comment on consent agenda items J1, 2 and 3. I wanted to thank Ms. Hannah and your team for these reports. I just think it's important to acknowledge and recognize how much work and time goes into these incredible and kind of nerdy, if you like, budgets reports. And also I really appreciate the HDL, the sales tax report. That's really helpful. And, and I, I look forward to seeing it when it's in the packet. So thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. I wanted to give a similar shout out to 10G3 regarding the MST agreement with the city to share in the fix of the Marina Drive drainage. If many of you know that it floods every year, you know, a foot to two feet deep. It makes it unsafe to drive through near where Palm Avenue crosses Del Monte. And so that is being addressed by this agreement where the city pays and MST does the construction as part of the SURF project. They're already there with the heavy equipment. So there's a, there's a savings in scale when you have the equipment already on site. So thanks to MST and the city for getting together on that agreement. Okay. A motion that we approve our consent minus item 8L1, or sorry, 10L1.
I second.
All right. Any comments for votes? Ryan, you have a big smile on your face.
We were arguing who was going to second and we both lost.
They were so busy arguing. Kathy snuck in there. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That motion passes unanimously with the five of us present. We don't have any public hearings, so we're going to go to the Erin Harwin Show, also known as the Fort Ord Habitat Management Plan Incidental Take Permit Process. And Erin brought her special lieutenant, Todd Muck, tonight from TMC. And who's your, who's your colleague? Yannika Strauss. Thank you, Yannika, for being here. Steve from GHD. Thank you for being here, Steve.
This is still on.
One more, too. Oh.
And Fred, Fred's just here in the corner. Keep everybody in line.
The peanut gallery. All right. Well, thanks, everyone. Thanks for having me back. I'm Erin Harwin with Denise Stuffing Associates. And I am a, the project manager for both the two projects that we're going to be discussing tonight. I was here back in May with an update and we made some exciting progress and have some things to put before with you, before you tonight for some input. So thanks so much for having me again. I'm going to start with an update on the ITP project and an overview of the conceptual mitigation strategy update that we have for you and also an update on the Resource Management Plan project. But first, it does have a little lag. As I mentioned, we have two, two contracts with the city currently right now. And thanks for extending those back in June, as you did. We laid out the history of both, both of these projects in the staff report pretty well, but happy to revisit any questions you might have. We are working with the city to prepare and submit an incidental take permit application to the California Department of Fish and Wildlife for the incidental take of Monterey Gilia. And that's all been outlined in the staff report. I don't want to take up too much time rehashing. We're also working with the city on the Habitat Management Plan compliance by preparing a resource management plan. The citywide ITP, as you're aware, is a really proactive holistic approach to identifying potential conceptual or potential development and conservation opportunities within the city on their former Fort Ord lands, finding that balance for, for economic growth and also conservation. The Resource Management Plan project is the requirement of the Fort Ord Habitat Management Plan and deed restrictions when the city received land from, from the former Fort Ord and it's obligated to manage our habitat within four different areas on the former Fort Ord. So I'll start with showing you a map of those four areas going west to east. We have the Northwest Corner Habitat Management Plan and I get caught up in acronyms, as you know. So if you need me to spell anything out or identify anything, let me know. So HMA is Habitat Management Area. So the Northwest Corner is over there along the eastern boundary of Highway 1 there at Del Monte Boulevard exit. Then you have your newly acquired landfill HMA. And then going towards the north in your airport area, you have the airport HMA and also the Salinas River HMA. And these total about 543 acres. So an important part of our resource management plan is to identify how the city can manage and maintain these habitats in perpetuity in a cost-effective manner. It's a lot, it's a lot of acreage. All right. We're going to walk down memory lane a little bit. So for the incidental take permit project, as you recall, we started with city staff and council and members of the public and of course, Dr. Fred Watson and identifying, identifying potential development and conservation areas within the city's lands on our former Fort Ord. So what we did is we identified first, you know, what, what is the city looking to, to develop? Where, where are there areas that they want to focus and prioritize? Economic recovery, housing, all the good stuff that the city, city wants to do. And with that, we overlaid populations of Monterey Gilia from historical databases, current data from Dr. Fred Watson again, DDNA and of course, the California Natural Diversity Database. So that helped us sharpen our pencils. Do we need to do more surveys? What do we want to do here? So we started identifying a number of potential areas to, to focus on. And again, going west to east, we have the Marina Northwest Corner. We have the Cypress Knolls specific plan area. We have an area we're calling 8th Street area, which is just south of Cypress Knolls. And you have your landfill HMA. And then going up towards Preston, there's a, called Preston Park area. There's the Salinas River Reserve, or sorry, Salinas Avenue Reservation Road. That green triangle there at the corner of that, those two streets. We have the airport business park and airport. We have the airport business park and airport master plan area. Lots going on. So that's where we started. And then we sharpened our pencils. We went to, we held community workshops. We've been here. And then really kind of really identify what those developments might look like and what that preservation would look like for this conceptual mitigation strategy. So we heard from the public and the council, the Marina Northwest Corner area where Del Monte Avenue and Second Avenue, sorry, Del Monte Boulevard and Second Avenue extension was proposed. Cypress Knolls and the airport were highly prized areas to focus on development. When we came back in front of you in May, we talked about the issue that we're having with the Del Monte Boulevard extension through the Marina Northwest Corner. You can see the former conceptual alignment in red there and you can see it going through a very important population of Monterey Gilia. And the resource agencies, both CDFW and the US Fish and Wildlife Service, both said, we'd really like you and your engineering team to look at potential alternatives to avoid bisecting that property and put it more in development. And so we did that and we brought that to you and you gave us a thumbs up. The public and resource agencies gave us a thumbs up. So we went back and we got back to work on our conceptual mitigation strategy. So this is what we've been doing since May. So we have redesigned, realigned where that road extension would go, focusing on the west end of Cypress Knolls instead of the San Gilia. We looked at a couple other new priorities that had come up over the last year with the city, which included the Marina Equestrian Center expansion area. I'm going to get to some maps, so we'll go area by area. And then the Preston Park Athletic Fields Expansion, we were working with HML and Public Works on identifying what that would look like. Also brought before you last May, CDFW suggested the inclusion of some additional listed and candidate species, the Western Burrowing Owl, a couple of species of bumblebees, seaside birdsbeak, another listed plant, and potentially California Tiger Salamander, which is duly listed with the federal, the feds and the state. So we're looking at identifying potential habitat for those species and what that mitigation strategy would look like. So tonight, we're just talking about the Monterey Gilia conceptual mitigation strategy. So we've been working with the agencies to refine that strategy and we'll get to some numbers later, but we've been working with the calculations of updating the impact and preservation calculations. We've been coordinating with the Transportation Agency for Monterey County regarding their proposed California Avenue segment of Fort Tag, Fort Tag, the Fort Ord Regional Trail and Greenway Project. And also, I left this out accidentally, Home to Suites, and I'll get to that as well in terms of incorporating them into our mitigation strategy. And most importantly, we've made a lot of progress coordinating with the 2045 General Plan Update process. So that's been really great to sit down with the consultants and the city staff. Thank you. Allison, she's not here. And Guido, for sitting down with us. It's probably more info than you want, but when CDFW issues the incidental take permit, they need to rely on a SECA document, so California Environmental Quality Act. And we're thinking that we can rely on the General Plan Update EIR. So we need to make sure it's consistent, impacts are discussed, and that's kind of just a devil in the details, but we've been having some great meetings. Okay, so right now what you're looking at today is our refined conceptual mitigation strategy. You will see those generalized areas that I've gone through already, but please note that Home to Suites is now on here. You can see it south of Imgen Parkway in a little square. So I'll get to that discussion in a moment as well. You can see the red areas are proposed impact areas with the darker red blobs, polygons, being populations of Monterey Gilia. You can see the blue areas, which are proposed for preservation and those dark blue polygons are also populations of Monterey Gilia that would be preserved. So we have a number of things going on and we're going to go to area by area like I suggested. Except I don't have separate maps for Salinas Avenue. As you can see, all that's being proposed is preservation and for the airport area in red where Joby is, or in that area, the business park, that's all proposed for impact. Okay, Marina Northwest Corner. So again, we worked with the engineers to relocate the proposed realignment of Second Avenue Del Monte Extension and move that over to the western portion of Cypress Knolls. The little rainbow crescent pink through the middle, there is a potential proposed overpass Caltrans project, maybe sometime in the future, but we're leaving that in there as potential impact at a later date. The bottom third is consistent with the proposed commercial area as part of the general plan update. And let's see. And then again, the blue, we're really aiming to keep it as preserved as possible. And we also identified a potential restoration area, which is the Green Hatch. All right, Cypress Knolls. Here, we're looking to preserve these two linear bands of Gilia. It's historic, also very important population, as Dr. Watson has informed us. So we're looking to keep those bands of Gilia in the future. Preston Park, again, we worked with Public Works to identify impact areas to the north where Gilia would be impacted from the Fields Expansion Project. And we also identified a potential restoration area on the southern end. This is the landfill parcel. As you probably are aware, the purple areas on the northern part of the landfill parcel are already in conservation as a result of the Imgen Parkway ITP that was obtained for that project. So it's about 60 acres of Gilia habitat that's already in conservation. We are looking at doing some sort of conservation area on the southern portion there shown in blue, making sure not to encroach on or conflict with the potential or the future Fort Tag alignment that you could see going down Engineer Equipment Road and then across Inner Garrison. And also a potential restoration opportunity at that parcel. Okay, here's the meat. So we added in the Marina Equestrian Center Impact Area on the top portion, which is red. And there are, it's a public development, public benefit conveyance, PBC parcel. So it does have some limitations, right, Lane, in terms of future use, being open to the public, being for public benefit. So we we are setting that aside or not setting aside. We are proposing that for impact. The rest of the 8th Street area, which was shown earlier in our figures, is there's a lot going on, so I need to walk you through. So we're proposing the rest as preservation. So Home to Suites received a violation from CDFW earlier this year for impacts to Monterey Gilia associated with the development of its hotel. CDFW at the time, or still does, recommended that that applicant, DADWAL, DADWAL Management Group, reach out to the city to see about being included in the citywide ITP, see if that mitigation could be incorporated into the citywide ITP. Overall, there's a general lack of Monterey Gilia habitat in the area. It's a very constrained population. It's very rare. So DADWAL reached out to the city and we worked with CDFW to propose an area approximately 1.7 acres. And you'll see it on the map. I can't exactly see the color. It might be Green Hatch for restoration as part of the mitigation for that project or that violation. Fort Tag, TMC, also reached out to the city and requested being included as part of the citywide, or at least being able to use the 8th Street area as mitigation for its impacts to Gilia. So you can see the Fort Tag alignment, the California Avenue segment through this parcel. And you can see in the purple hatch where TMC would propose, is proposing as their mitigation site. I say this way more eloquently because it's complicated in the staff report. I do want to point out that. So with these two situations, requesting a land that would be taken away from the citywide approach, we coordinated with CDFW, city staff and I, and also TMC and DADWAL to ensure that if the city did offer this land up to others for mitigation, that it had enough to mitigate for its impacts, right? All the areas I showed you in red. We want to make sure the city is secure before offering anything to others. So that was the goal here. And where we are now is that the California Department of Fish and Wildlife has said we're on the right track. We have not, the city has not submitted an application. We're kind of doing something a little bit untraditional. We are starting with our conservation strategy before really submitting an application because we really wanted to get our ducks in a row and all of our data before going back and forth as sometimes happens with the application process. So the city has not submitted the application for the citywide yet. So the CDFW cannot officially say that your conceptual mitigation strategy is enough. All it can say is you're on the right track. It looks like it can be accommodated. And more importantly, if the city requests, at the city's request, it's happy to provide a letter assuring the that the remaining balance of 8th Street, even with this offering to others, would still be counted towards the citywide. So it wouldn't be taken out of our form altogether. Okay. Equestrian use, you can see the existing yellow trails on the figure. Typically, what happens when a area gets put in conservation under a permit, public access isn't allowed. CFW is willing to maintain public access, both with the Fort Tag use of that trail and also the use of the equestrian trails. So let's see. I think the easiest thing to do is probably to read an excerpt from the staff report to talk about this joining mitigation strategies approach. This approach involving, involves aligning the mitigation measures, timelines, and conservation objectives of both permitting efforts to ensure consistency and avoid duplicate or conflicting requirements. This is for the Fort Tag and citywide permit efforts. Under this approach, a portion of the 8th Street area will be set aside to mitigate for the proposed Fort Tag project. As I said, that's the 4.8 acres shown in purple. The balance of the 8th Street area would contribute to the proposed conceptual mitigation strategy for Monterey Gilia under the citywide ITP. The city would provide for permanent protection and management of the 8th Street area under a conservation easement and long-term management plan, combining or coordinating the respective mitigation measures so that habitat preservation, enhancement, and monitoring requirements function cohesively. The specific terms of this approach have not been delineated. We do need to see the ITP issued for Fort Tag, which is expected in December after the board meeting, I think. Yes. And so once we see those details of what the ITP for Fort Tag will require, we can start setting up an agreement identifying the roles and responsibilities between the two parties. So for both of these, for the joining mitigation strategy strategies of approach, if it's supported by council to continue these conversations, I think that's, that's not, I think, that's the input we're asking for tonight. Again, we don't have the devil in the details, but we want to know whether council and the public would be supportive moving forward with continuing those efforts. Like I said, the ITP is going to be issued in December. We can start figuring out who's going to do what. Some of those items are identified in the fiscal section of the staff report, including what TMC is planning to cover for their costs. The DADWAL Home to Suites situation is a little different. It's not a joining mitigation strategies approach. It's more of that violation would be folded into the citywide ITP as part of the overall mitigation. The CDFW can't retroactively issue an ITP for a violation, so it has to be remedied in a different way. And I can speak more to that if you like. I think I'll pause now because I think that's a lot.
Mayor, I can just Hey Matt, has some input here.
If you can pull up that last chart. Wanted to highlight a couple of things to the council, make sure that you're aware of. So as Erin has talked about, this is really a lot of the core of our ITP and our original plans. A lot of these were developed properties. And so the little triangle on the right-hand side of Imgen Road as it goes down there, that was always going to be a development parcel. And previously, we'd talked maybe in the past about different facilities being built there. And so that is completely being taken out of development and that's a big change from what we previously talked before. If you look at where the Los Animas is right now and that will be closed in in December of this year. And some of that, when it was open, some of the residents along California talked about, well, can we eventually, if future use, can we punch a a path into Imgen Road or Imgen Parkway? This would prevent that from happening because the ITP areas around there. And so basically whatever future use is there, it'll come out Ninth and then and then either go north or south on California. So I just want to make you aware that that is that's locking in that development there. On the corner of Ninth and California, there's a little red triangle across the Equestrian Center and that was important for us to keep out. That used to be the old building there that was torn down this year. And that will serve as overflow parking for the Equestrian Center and and that's just an important use that we keep available for the Equestrian Center. And I just want to pull up those uses. All along 8th Street on the bottom there, that had been potential future economic development, talked about potential retail, potentially mixed use. And so this is a significant change of all that going into a conservation easement. So I just want to highlight that those are are significant changes that we're doing to be able to accommodate this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Lane. And also I do have some slides after this, but I wanted to pause on this 8th Street area first.
Okay, so normally we go to public comment after your presentation.
Should I finish the slides?
Counsel? It's not for us to ask questions yet because only the public goes. So either we finish the presentation and we go to public? Or we go to public now and?
If I may, Mayor, and I know it's a little unusual, I'm thoroughly confused. I have a lot of questions, but I'm not understanding what additional information is being provided to me because I don't even understand what already has been provided. So I'm wondering if we could each ask a couple of questions if we have them.
Well, why don't we go to public comment? And then we'll come back and do what you just said. Okay? So let's go to public comment, starting with anyone here in person. Come on up. You have up to three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. My name is Fred Watson. I want to thank everybody on behalf of the future public interest, the public estate, for all that's been done so far by council staff, previous councils, Erin's team, TMC team. When, there's a quote in the staff report that says, CDFW says we're on the right track. I think we're on the right track. Um, I think we're on the right track. There's a lot of pieces that are coming together here. Um, I've got all sorts of thoughts on the details, but the big picture seems like we're we're getting um getting things sort of sorted out. Um, which is to say that the vision here that many of us have had for a long time is to recognize some landscape that we live in that's truly unique, that if we took it away, it would it wouldn't, it would be gone from the world forever. And to say, we'd like to keep that, we'd like to be able to enjoy it. And so there's a balance of conservation of that landscape and provision of public access to it through it that I think we're we're figuring out now. And um, I think we'll we'll really appreciate that forever. I only have two questions, and they're not at all to do with what we've been talking about. Um, I would like counsel to ask uh staff and consultants in their future discussions with Fish and Wildlife on the state and federal side to emphasize ways in which we can continue to appreciate the lands that we're preserving. So when when apparently we need to put fences around the preserved lands and close off public access. That makes a lot of sense, but I think there's some opportunities um to provide um low-impact public access, perhaps for, for example, on a limited number of organized tours by the California Native Plant Society. Um, so that we don't recognize it and then cut ourselves off from even knowing what it looks like. And then on the the federal side, the Habitat Management Plan side, um, a long time ago, when we were working out the HCP, which doesn't exist anymore, there were some four tag alignments that uh Aaron's team worked with um near the Salinas River that went through some HMPs. So the plan was that the HCP would allow for four tag to go through some of those HMP areas. Um, and I uh I would I would like to request that that still be on the table. We haven't really heard much about it. Um, and maybe that's already the case, it's in the discussions, but it's we've not heard much about it. So it'd be just nice to hear from consultants what the situation there is. Um, in particular with that Slint, that Salinas River HMA, where there's not a lot of room and four tag is planned to go through that, uh, has planned to go through that HMA for a long time. Thank you.
Brad, for all your work on this and to Scott, especially on the four tag, Scott Waltz is here as well. Anyone else in person wish to comment? Will we go to people online? All right, seeing uh no one online either, I'll give you a moment, those of you that are online. If you want to raise your hand to speak tonight on this. Okay, we'll close public comment. Uh. Aaron, given what Fred just asked, uh, is it in the future that we'll be hearing about the Salinas Avenue, more about the Salinas Avenue Habitat Management Area? And whether four tag is potentially a part of a piece of that?
Yes, not tonight, though.
Not tonight. Okay, and do you and California Department of Fish and Wildlife Service kind of agree that if we can allow public to enjoy a protected resource, that that resource is better off? And we should try to do that where possible?
Will you repeat the question?
Yeah, do you agree what Fred was saying that uh if we if we allow pu- limited public access, so public can be aware of what we're protecting, that we're better, we'll do a better job protecting it if people are part of that? Uh, so that those opportunities to enter these areas that are restricted can continue for education and public appreciation?
That is a really good question, and it's been on the top of our minds, especially with um CDFW um being uh amenable to allowing continued public access in that H Street area, the equestrian use and and four tag. Um, when you set up a conservation easement, you have um a deed, and so it's it outlines what's prohibited and what's what's allowed. Uh, it's a negotiation with CDFW to see what options might be in the future. But I have seen um restricted access as, you know, signing up, you know, being um reserving your time, you know, that sort of thing, so you can continue having access. But it's not, it's not a um a concern for the conservation easement holder who's responsible for maintaining those conservation values in perpetuity. If those are degraded by public asset access in some way, they've got to uh remedy that situation. So there is a balance, but I don't think I think limited public use might be um a good opportunity in certain areas that we're proposing as part of the conceptual strategy.
All right, thank you. Let's go to Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, trying to figure out where to start to make best use of our time. So there's the HMA, which is in green, there's and then there's these other blue and red proposed impact preservation. Can you, first of all, can you just explain to me exactly what the difference is between the red proposed impact and proposed preservation? Me, I'm kind of lost here. So what what's the difference there? And then also the green and for each one, if we designate those as such, if that's the choice we have, is there entry allowed into those areas of public access?
Great, let me take those in pieces. So the green areas are HMAs that the city is required to manage and maintain in perpetuity as a requirement of the base um Habitat Management Plan and the deed restrictions that were signed. So um, under the Habitat Management Plan, um, some have allowed use and some don't have their reserve areas. So specifically what Dr. Watson was referring to at the Salinas River HMA, that is a Salinas uh River Reserve. Technically, there are no um new development or um facilities allowed in that HMA. Use of existing parcel, public access, that's still on, or use the existing trail, sorry, and public ac- access is still on the table. Um, these are all, those restrictions and management actions are all being developed as part of the Resource Management Plan, which I didn't get to the slide. And I have to say the RMP is kind of um not the star of the show tonight. But um it has fallen behind schedule, which is what I was going to tell you all, because we are working to get the ITP figured out and the general plan coordination figured out to a better level to make sure all these three things are consistent. Because that's going to be important in the end. So, RMP aside, those four areas um part of a resource management plan that's in development, completely separate with some overlap with the ITP. As you noticed, um, the landfill HMA and Marina Northwest Corner HMA both have areas um of preservation and impact. So the red and the blue identify which areas could be developed and which would be conserved. So the blue areas would be conserved in perpetuity with a conservation easement over them with or without some level of public access. The red would be where development could occur and take could occur and would be covered under that citywide incidental take permit.
Okay, thank you. And then in terms of the HMAs and and Dr. Watson's question, um, I know the council has also talked a lot about developing that area. Model has talked to some degree about developing that area into kind of a park or cemetery, something like that. Through this process, could we, the council, say that that's what we want to potentially do for approval? I mean, can we, can we memorialize that so that it becomes, there's no question down the road, that's what we're doing, kind of thing?
Potentially, specifically for the reserve area, the Salinas River Reserve. Um, there are no development activities, construction allowed under the HMP. And that's an approved agreement document that was um completed during, when the Army closed the base and they had to consult under Federal Endangered Species Act with the Fish and Wildlife Service. That was their mitigation, is that all of that would be in a reserve. And so undoing that mitigation might be complicated to allow the construction of a trail, for example, or some other activity that would physically disrupt the ground. That's not to say that different levels of activities can't be negotiated as part of this process. Like I said, use of existing trails, public access, um, spreading ashes on trees. Um, all of these things might be available as long as we can show that it's not going to impact the resources that are trying to be maintained in perpetuity.
Okay, thank you. And I'll ask one more question. Um, and I think I've asked this before, but it still doesn't make sense to me. So it's nonsensical to me that all of these Gilead species are outside of kind of our core original downtown, right? Like, and I'm just trying to understand, are there none depicted in the original Old Marina because they're not looked for? Is it because we don't really care? Is it, I mean?
We care. Um, it's because we're not really looking at them. Um, you know, when you walk down the street, do you think about all the endangered species that you might be walking down? And or walking past, we don't really think about it. These act, these permits, these um are triggered by wanting to impact the areas versus trying to just conserve them while you're walking down the street. So I know Bruce knows, sorry, Mayor knows, that um there are Monterey Gilead populations in Old Town Marina. There are, you know, um, special status species all over the city. Um, how you prioritize that and how you set those aside is a different trigger than when you bring a consultant on to look at development and get you a permit to cover development.
Thank you. Lots more questions, but I'll ask.
Thank you, Brian. Let's go to Councilmember Biala.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just so that I can get the big picture on this, on Exhibit C is essentially these sites of red are the development areas. We have covered all the mitigation sites. I mean, it's a balance, right? That we don't have an excess or a deficit in in sites at this point. These are all.
We're on the right track, quote unquote. We don't have an official determination, but.
Yes, but you feel that we have balance and and all the development sites that we want have now been um, have, we have have been designated areas for mitigation that's that in our opinion at this point suffice.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, so if we were to ta- to want to build on one of the the blue sites, for example, you know, for for the um uh places where San Gilia is, is it possible for us to identify another site in the city? I mean, I'm sorry, outside the city, I heard a rumor. Uh, I wouldn't confirm it in any way, but but the possibility of another agency in a neighboring area might have a mitigation site that would be appropriate for San Gilia. Is that possible for us to engage with that agency and say if we wanted to develop in Cypress Knolls, the one smaller area, I'm just talking off the top of my head right now. Could we, could we designate a site outside of our jurisdiction to mitigate?
Yes, I think that is possible. It might require a higher mitigation ratio or something like that, but um, yeah, it's part of, it's part of the negotiation. We're very early on, so if there's anything in blue that you want to be in red, this is the important time to to convey that.
Great, so we need to think about that. And and there are just some areas like that, that we're going to have extensive development in Cypress Knolls and it i- and and to have two sort of almost parallel you s- you know, areas there, it just seems like, okay, how do we develop on that with these kinds of things? So that's possible, so we could begin to to consider some options. Do you think that if we take out a um, a uh, uh, a blue section is and mitigate it someplace else? Do you feel that that's, that does justice to the mitigation? I mean, i- is it a lesser thing for us to say that we're 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 cheating the environmental cause?
That's a really interesting question. Um, my initial reaction is a little bit, to be quite honest. Um, Marina is a very unique place with the Dunes. And the only other areas that I know might be potentially available for mitigation consist of um potentially different habitat types, different microclimates, you know, different things that you'd be, you're not in kind and you're off-site, it's going to cost you more money to acquire this land and set up those agreements off-site. Something to consider.
Yeah.
Um, management's more expensive when you spread it out over a larger area. So those are things to consider.
Okay, and and that's of course in balance with some some dire needs that the city might have for those properties is the only that would, you know, be sort of concessionary. Okay, and um so I I want to talk a little bit about the Doddwall um issue. And um, I, and I, I'm looking at this as a potential precedent or how do, how do we avoid this in the future? So it seems like with only 1.7 mitigation um uh area required, it's probably only a little, a a little bit, right? Because as I understand it, sometimes it's three or four acres per plant or something. So it is, can I assume that that was a small, small violation regardless of it's still a violation? But i- is that so that on that property, it was maybe a few plants? Or I, can you, can you translate it to me, to me to some?
It was a smaller impact than than, as you would say, that happened with Imgen Parkway. So yes, so right now we're we're proposing a very small acreage, 1.7 acres of restoration on in that H Street area to
Right.
to remedy that impact.
So that means it might be a, like, in in the number of plants, what does that translate to?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
I don't remember.
Under 200.
Thank you.
Okay, Fred, under 200 plants at the home tube?
I don't remember. Yeah. 200 still sounds a lot to me, but okay, that's.
You're going to have to come up to the top. Fred, you have to speak here. No, we had a question from a council member, and this expert can answer the question.
Uh, the Home to Sweet Sites was one of four sites identified in the original environmental work for the Dunes Project. But the strategy was to avoid them, not to take and mitigate somewhere else, but just to to preserve and protect in perpetuity in place. From memory, the the patch at Home to Sweets was in the 300 range of the number of plants and half of that. Um, but roughly half was on the Home to Sweet site and the other half is still um undeveloped.
So less than 200 on the part that was in violation?
Yeah, the re- recent counts have been lower.
Okay, so we are attempting to do a joint remedy for that. But is there other another thing that they get fined? Or what's what it, if you violate, what what are some of the other consequences?
You could get fined or go to jail.
Oh, okay. Hope that doesn't happen.
Which is why he reached out and and he asked for help. Okay, he didn't know, he doesn't know how to, how to acquire land. It's it's a big process.
Right, right. So what it, just in case there's another developer out there that doesn't know, did he not know? Or how how does it get to be a place where he has a violation that he's not really, he obviously he knew it?
I don't want to answer that.
Okay, all right.
I'm really sorry, but like the legal perspective, I just, I don't want to go into.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're not going to surprise a developer that that they did something that they really didn't know that was consequences.
As part of the entitlements approval process, um biological reports, environmental reviews required where this situation is identified as Dr. Watson um acknowledged the mitigation in the EIR for the Dunes was not to impact that and to avoid impacts. So um, it wasn't followed.
Yeah, because I also know some other property owners, they don't, they they don't even know how to spot it. You know, they don't even know, they they know something is out there that they shouldn't do anything with, but they they don't have any sense of what it is that, so I'm just saying that we want to be.
Thank you for the question.
Okay.
Kathy, if I, one of the point with that, as we've talked with Fish and Wildlife is if if there may potentially be other areas that come up that we want to develop, little smaller parcels or little problems like that. And so this ITP will give us the ability to hopefully mitigate for those little smaller areas because we know if oops and problems will come in the future. And so we've had that discussion with with Fish and Wildlife that, yeah, the intent is, yes, this is not absolutely finite, the little things will come up in the future that we'll be able to help mitigate for that.
Okay, and and the uh the initial issue that I was bringing up in Cypress Knolls, that's obviously not a little piece. So that's, you know, I'm, I was glad to hear that if we run out of mitigation space, that we can go outside of our city jurisdiction, if there's a proper place that we could mitigate, that would be still acceptable. Okay, I'm gonna, can do I have one more question?
We can go on.
Oh, next. Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay.
All right, we'll come back with Kathy and with Brian. Uh, Councilmember Mayor Pretend. All right, we'll come back with Kathy and with Brian. Uh, Councilmember Mayor Pretend Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Aaron, for the report. Um, yes, it's an understatement that this does affect our city's plans for this area. And um like uh our city manager already said, that the whole area um or the the current Los Animas area, whatever happens there can only be accessed from Ninth Street, which is a uh quite a restriction. Might be pickable courts after all, so just saying. And uh um, let me see here. Uh, yeah, and it's a beautiful flower, but um if somebody points it out to you, like our mayor with his uh what do you call the, yeah, so it's it's beautiful, but if you don't know where it is, i- it's or it and most of the year, it's it's not there. So that's my concern for anything we develop, we're going to develop or the city is going to develop like Cypress Knolls, you will have to fence it off. But and you have to make it very clear to landscapers that no, no, this is just dormant. You cannot plant anything else there. You need signs and QR codes and yes, belts and whistles. So um but it's a beautiful flower. I I must say it's really beautiful. And my daughter, who studied here at CSU MB with, I think, Dr. Fred Watson as well, uh years ago, when I started on the council and I mentioned something about developing, he said, you cannot develop if there if there's a sand gilia. So anyway, that's the balance. So um uh but I'm also grateful for people who who are have decided to conserve this. Um oh, yeah, and my question is, it seems that this plant i- it does better when it does get disturbed, huh?
Yes, you're correct.
So I'm all for those horse trails, the question trails, that for me, that's non-negotiable. We, why would you have a a question center and no exit to go to the beautiful Ford Oars? Because I know the horses don't have shoes here because they don't even go on the streets, so they need that access. So for me, that's everything is on the table except for that. Um almost done here. Oh, yeah, just the last remark for um Councilmember McCarthy, the cemetery. Yeah, I'm very in favor of a cemetery or human co- human composting somewhere, but I couldn't resist laughing. It's uh we'll be pushing up uh San Gilia if we do that. So anyway.
Instead of daisies.
Instead of daisies. Yeah, isn't that funny? Yeah, I came up. Thank you.
All right, um on the on the cemetery idea, I'm colorblind, but it looks like a large pink or or red area north of the airport that's not in a habitat management area. Trying to see which exhibit on Exhibit B. So that very, the largest piece north of the airport. Does that have restrictions? It's the airport master plan area.
The gray one? Oh, you're colorblind. You said, um, that's gray.
It's fiery red to me. So, yeah, so that that large piece there, like, it looks like an anvil to me.
Yeah.
So is there a potential for a green cemetery there? Or is there restrictions on that piece? On Exhibit B.
Right, um the airport master plan area in gray, north of the the runway. Okay, yes. Um uh restrictions for development probably would be related to the airport um restrictions, not anything um habitat related.
And does our city manager or someone know if those extend those airport-related restrictions, do they extend all the way to the northern boundary of that piece?
Yeah, the airport master plan, the part right next to the runway calls for an um, there's an aviation use. Then above that is a non-aviation use. Then as you go closer to the point, we don't really have any plans there. There are some restrictions because of the the little radar thing there at the corner.
Which is which is noted there as little boxes.
But yes, there can potentially be some options there. So it it is, it's property that under the airport master plan, it is scheduled to be developed.
Okay, so potentially toward the northern portion of that piece, we could have something of low-impact development.
Yes.
Okay. Um in all that you're doing and all that you're gonna do, you talked about restoration and and you didn't talk specifically about maintaining these properties that are set aside, but of course, they'll have to be maintained i- in recognition of the threats. And so where I'm going with this is uh we had a uh a student graduate class do a semester project last year on Tory pine, which is invasive plant in this area. And uh so my question is, can you provide for us or are you already working on it? An analysis of how the Tory pine could be uh managed so that it's not such the threat that it's becoming to be on these valuable pieces that we're talking about setting aside?
Definitely. We will. Um, so first, we get our application deemed complete by the Conference Department of Fish and Wildlife. Then we'll work with them very closely to identify the terms of the I T P, what areas will be preserved and all of that. And then they'll issue the I T P, which will require the completion of a land habitat lands package. As part of that habitat lands package, you'll be required to prepare long-term management plans for each of these areas, which will identify how management and maintenance will happen in perpetuity for the sites, which will include non-native invasive species removal and control.
All right, so that's that sequence to me sounds like three to 10 years. And uh so I guess we'll, I'll talk later because it's getting off subject about what we can do. So we don't watch our jewels degrade for the paperwork to catch up to reality of their degradation. Okay. Um Cypress Knolls, are those two east to west trending polygons of gilia protection? Are those on ridge tops, ridge lines? Usually it grows on ridge lines. Fred, do you know if those two Cypress Knolls?
I think they are.
Okay. Okay, so um usually they're toward the top, not toward the bottom. They're not in the valleys. They're near the the ridge faces maybe, or if not on the top. And so those are the kinds of places that people are going to want to climb up to. And uh so my question is, how really, in reality, how viable all these are these polygons? They can't be burned. Um, it's going to be, they're going to be attractive to dog walkers. They're going to be attractive to cats, getting birds. They're going to be attracted to people who want to get away from, you know, people. And so it's not been my understanding that protecting these kinds of islands in a residential development is really that viable. And I can see that they're important, especially the northern of the two, because it's got a lot of gilia. But what really is the sense of expecting us as a city to keep that intact as gilia, you know, su- uh suitable habitat in the long run?
That's a really great question. And again, we're in this unique environment where the Army has been operating this base for for decades. Um, this gila has been sitting in the middle of a residential area for decades, so it's thriving. So even with the disturbance and activities it's gotten over the years, um it's thriving. And then we're dealing with postage stamp conservation areas because that's what we're left with. So it is a challenge, but I don't think it's um insurmountable.
Okay, my last question on this round is uh I think you have restoration areas in a couple places noted by green or yellow-hatched uh squares.
Very preliminary areas.
Okay.
Yes.
And I can't find it right now, but one of them is toward Imogen Parkway. Maybe it's on the HD parcel. I just can't find it. Uh maybe go to a different exhibit. It was near Eighth Street. I think it was on the Eighth Street. Yeah, so on Exhibit D, as in David, in the lower left corner, there's a square that is hatched. And I think in the legend, although I'm compromised here, Exhibit D, it says that it's a proposed restoration. Exhibit D, as in David, it has the Las Animas and the Equestrian Center in the middle.
Uh huh.
There's some blue wrapping around it. Not the one on this, it's Exhibit.
There we go. Thank you.
Okay, so is that green or yellow?
It's green.
It's green.
Does that green depict proposed restoration?
Yes.
Okay. So it looks surrounded by oak woodland. What needs to be done to restore it? Why is that? Restoration of what?
It's an old um gravelly parking lot staging area.
Okay.
Um, that could be turned into habitat.
All right, so if you go north to the Los Animas site, which right now, of course, is basically a san- a concrete mixing plant, et cetera, um could that be a similar square of restoration habitat? So that you would gain, you know, a few acres instead of trying to find a use that you have to drive in a long way to. Uh, so anyway, so that's my question is, could that be a proposed restoration area?
Potentially. I'd have to revisit the parcel lines. I think that's part of the public benefit conveyance parcel, which um needs to be open to public use and not sure those are compatible. So we'd have to look into that.
Okay. All right, so we'll turn it over to Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to bounce back to the Salinas River H and A. Um you know, this is, this is kind of a public land that in my opinion is a one-of-a-kind my word microbiome that is unlike anywhere else along the Salinas River and certainly in this area. And letting the public experience that I think is worthy of consideration and hopefully memorializing. The council actually a couple of months ago was discussing this area and we agreed we were going to have a field trip. And we were going to try to do that before the rainy season. And here we are. So to staff, how close are we to that field trip? Of the Salinas River H and A area?
Um, good question.
Um, I I'd really like to do that. I think, you know, um, there's probably people in this room that would appreciate that opportunity uh to to kind of have some discussion and and actually see the area that we're talking about. It's really hard to talk about, I mean, a lot of these other areas we've kind of seen, but most of us haven't actually been out to the Salinas River H and A area. And it's really hard to make decisions on land that we haven't even seen. I will tell you, I've been out there and I was stunned. Um if you've ever been to Singapore, it's just the first thing that came to my mind because it's just very moist, it's very um just the the way the oaks and the trees are, it's just what it reminded me of. And it's not like any other area um that I've experienced in Marina. I'll move on to the equestrian center. You know, the 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 paths are kind of an interesting concept. Another thing the council has talked about is the reality that equestrian uses are dying throughout the peninsula. Um, we don't know how much longer that equestrian center is going to be there. Um, I agree that while it's there, it's awfully important to have the pass, but also is there a way to plan for when inevitably that equestrian center is probably going to close, um, in my opinion? So if we have leverage and are we kind of blowing it on this area? When we could be using that leverage somewhere else? Does that make sense in terms of the pass? Um I don't know if that's really a question, more of a comment, um, something to think about. Um
The question. Let's see what feedback you have, Aaron, on that.
I don't see, I mean, it's I don't see the let's see, um I think it's beneficial to keep up there. We're not losing anything in our negotiation with C F W as a as a result.
So I guess specifically asked another way, what if we had said, we're not, we don't want it there, but we want it to the Salinas River? Is that, I mean, is that a totally different discussion and?
It is because we're talking about that federal agreement. It's mitigation that the Army set aside for redeveloping the base that you have to reopen and and dive into. It's not a, it's not a San Gilia issue.
Okay, and is there any value in letting C F D W know that, hey, you know, there's a good chance that these, we may not want to use these paths in the future? Because we believe that equestrian uses throughout California, especially in this area, have all shut down. There's no reason to anticipate that ours won't.
Sure, I think that's um a reasonable um to let them know. Um, it was important when we were um trying to figure out how to not send the horses around. Um, and while the equestrian center was there, how to accommodate them um both during construction and with operation of foretag and then also just, you know, in general, um through that conservation easement area. So again, we're not losing anything by having them open if, you know, the city wants to get extra credit for restoring them at a later date. That could potentially be part of the long-term management plan for this this easement area.
Okay, thank you. Two more questions. One about um Dr. Watson, I I've had the pleasure of speaking with him and I understand he's one of the very few experts on San Gilia. And but that makes it challenging, right? Because usually in good science, you've got a lot of experts, you hear a lot of different opinions. Um, in this case, it sounds like maybe we're not getting that. Is there? Would you agree with that? Or I mean, how how do we approach that, right? Or is there no approach because there's really not a lot of experts in this area?
Um, there's really not a lot of experts. We really greatly appreciate all of um the work that uh Dr. Watson has done over the years in terms of surveys and collecting data, and that's informing um the five-year update um with the agency is that they're preparing right now. So it's uh what he's doing is really important. Um, there are other experts in um like uh work for the Federal Fish and Wildlife Service and the state and state parks and uh huh in this area. So basically, think of Salinas River down to Pebble Beach. You know, that's kind of the distribution we deal with on the coast. And there are a lot of um entities managing and maintaining populations of this this species as part of its recovery.
Thank you. Last question for now is uh I'm going to bounce over to the Home to Sweets area, which this is the first that I've heard of it. I don't know if it's been presented to council before or not. So I'm looking at 1.7 acres and even in the worst parts of Marina, you're talking about probably land value of well over a million dollars. So to staff, I'm curious, how how much do we plan to be compensated for incorporating this in our uh I guess our mitigation or whatever the right word is?
I think Aaron can answer. We were trying to roll it into our overall I T P to where we weren't having to really give up anything to do it. It was it was trying to accommodate that and see if if it could fit in. So I don't think we were they were necessarily giving up a lot of property for that, but Aaron could better answer that.
Sure, I'm gonna throw out a scenario that I think would be similar to the path with with Tamse, for example. Um, let's say C F W agrees that the 1.7 acres of restoration will remedy um Dadwall's violation. As part of that long-term management plan, we'd cost out that restoration. And potentially the city could enter into an agreement with Dadwall Management Group to reimburse for that um cost for the restoration. That's something that could happen, but there um as I outlined in the staff report, there are a lot of different moving parts with those land packages. So there are different costs and other things that will be come to light and we will come back to you all with that information and any draft agreements in the future.
Thank you. But ju- and just to be clear, so that 1.7 acres, though, is 1.7 acres that the city could otherwise sell to a developer that had had this not happened. I mean, it would be city land that would not be required for mitigation.
Yes, you're offering your land. Correct.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Did you have something else? Do you have something else? Councilmember Biala?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just to continue on your thought of um on the Cypress Knolls um property, um because there are essentially three large areas, um you know, on that site that have have the San Gilia. And I I heard your your assessment about uh the value to San Gilia staying in in their natural uh area versus mitigation and stuff. But let's say, because this is going to be highly developed regardless of what we decide to have to either mitigate or not mitigate on that property, we're we're developing. I mean, we have already had shirets on this. We have some dire needs for um mid- missing middle uh, you know, um housing, et cetera. So given that that need for the city, um and we're talking about fencing as well. Now, if we maintain these uh the two parallel, uh I don't know what kind of area you call those. If, in fact, people are tromping on it and if, in fact, they don't do well and we've set this this areas a- aside for preservation, what consequences do we have? That we've identified this in a highly urbanized area and now we can't preserve it because we can't control the people and the dogs and the whatever. What is the, what are the consequences to the city?
It's a great question, and I do want to It's a great question. And I do want to take us back to, we can't develop any of the red on these maps without some blue. So we have to remember moving forward that you're looking at Cypress Knolls right now. There's a lot of red. If you take more blue, you're gonna need more blue.
Yes. No, I understand that. And that's why I'm also thinking about what other options there are.
Right, okay. So, um, yeah, it's a those adaptive management strategies would be identified in the long-term management plan that I referenced for, for this parcel. So if you're getting repeat offenders, there's signage, there's enforcement. Yes, it'll cost the city more money. If i- in the end, it turns out that it's not a good space, you might have to reopen your permit and get an amendment with the state.
I will offer that as we develop out Cypress Knolls, uh, whether or not we had that in, in a protected Gilead area. You're gonna want big open spaces anyway. And so if you look at, the reason that that is a Gilead population is, is that's um, there's big roadways on either side of it with homes and that, that was an open space backyard between, between the homes. And so as we develop out, chances are you're gonna want big open space in areas anyway. You don't want it just totally packed and and, um, so not necessarily, um, I, I think there are some benefits to having open space areas and we would probably do it anyway. Now, we've been in discussions with Fish and Wildlife on, on the fencing issue and, and are continuing to have those discussions. I think we're all, including Fish and Wildlife, no one wants big chain link fence fences around these areas. Uh, and so it's trying to achieve the balance of, of preservation, but also making it not accessible, but, um, friendly to the public. And so maybe it is science, maybe it's, you know, whatever. So, but, uh, but if you're imagining these big chain link fixes, no, it then, that, that's not what we're looking at. And so it's trying to figure out the balance, how to keep the public off, but to make it so it's also incorporated into our, our use of the property and we're just starting to have those discussions with.
Okay, I think, I think that's important to me anyway. When we talk about open space and development, yes, we want that. It can be a visual aesthetic value, but, uh, if, if you're saying it requires fencing and you can't have people walking, it's a very different kind of open space to me. It, you know, when you're, when the, the area is surrounded by houses, et cetera. So just to know that, you know, if we can plant, uh, shrub barriers, that is visually much better than putting any kind of fence there that says keep out. I mean, you live across the street and it says keep out, you know, it just, there's, you know, because we have two really competing um, needs in that specific Cypress Knolls of, of needing it for housing. And then we have these strips where people are, uh, kept out of. And if they go in it, then we suffer a consequence because we haven't done enforcement in there. So it, it, it feels like kind of a no-win situation. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying yet, you know, in terms of what is the solution, but I can feel the tension of different needs competing on that property specifically. So, okay, and, uh, the second, uh, thing that I wanted to ask is, um, uh, in here, Tamsi is gonna be responsible for its own I T P from C F W, right? And, and that, of course, goes on its own timelines. And does this impact whether they're going to have any issues with that? How, how does it impact our, our I T Ps? Strategy? Or doesn't it matter because we're considered two separate I T Ps?
Well, the joining mitigation, um, strategies approach would tie our I T Ps together in, in a couple of different ways. One would be that Tamsi would have their 4.8 mitigation strategy in the purple there. Um, but the city would be responsible for recording the conservation easement over the remaining blue area. And the balance of which would come towards our I T P. So it's a, a combined approach.
Okay, so we really are joined.
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's helpful. Okay. And then, uh, when we talk about, um, the costs associated with completing, um, components of the Fort Tag I T P. For example, it lists some things Habitat Lands package, including but not limited to legal descriptions and maps. And then it goes later on to say standard fees, technical consultant expenses, staff time, attorney time and that kind of stuff. Do we know what costs approximately? Are we talking about several thousand or over a million? Or I have no idea what this means in terms of this, the cost of the city.
Um, I don't know off the top of my head and I would hate to provide a number that, um, is totally off. Um, so for example, um, to record the conservation easement, the city would need to hire an engineer to do the meets and bounds and do the legal description that would be attached to that C E. There's a fee to, um, record the C E. There's all of our time. I don't know the number off the top of my head, but, um, or an estimate, but we would be working to bring that back to you guys.
Okay, yeah, because I would like to also know not only what our costs are, but is there any kind of recovery for some of the costs through Tamsi or? Yeah, I just don't have a sense of what we're agreeing to in terms of dollars, you know, because we have some major city priorities with infrastructure that need to be, you know, to be met. Regardless, I mean, they absolutely need to be met. We cannot sustain what we've got here. Uh, so it's important for us to know money.
Just one moment, our city attorney has some input.
Yeah, I, I think in the staff report, it mentions that we would enter into an agreement with TMC to recover some of those costs. So that would come back to council.
Okay, and it's some cost. I just, you know, I just want to make sure that we're, we still can afford it. Thank you. Okay, and, um, that's all. Thank you. I'll go later.
Okay, great. More to come. All right. Thank you, Kathy. Mayor Protem Vischer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, and I, I'm all in favor about, um, of a, a joint, um, approach for this. But I also have concerns about, uh, if our, the staff report already says that the city needs to ensure that it has sufficient mitigation and to mitigate for impacts to Monterey Gilead under the citywide I T P before considering use of the land by TMC. And what would happen if, when Los Animas leaves and then the Sangilia starts popping up in that vacant area? How much blue need, do we need for that?
I don't know. Um, I don't know. You'll, uh, whoever comes up next and needs a conditional use permit has to go through the process and they'll have to figure it out. It's not part of the I T P right now. If you want it to be part of the I T P, again, we'd have to look into whether it's part of that public benefit conveyance parcel and what we need to do, but right now it's not part of our, our citywide permit. So everybody else is on their own.
Yes, so we just don't know. It is just uncertain. Like Preston Park, if, if more Sangilia pops up there, it's, we need so much blue. Yeah, we, we, yeah. It's a risk we take now.
Right. What we're doing is we've identified these areas of the city that we, that we think we want to develop. And this is just saying, this is what we're gonna have to do to mitigate, but you're absolutely right. There are other areas in the city that we may want to develop in the future and we would have to.
Find more blue.
Find more blue, yeah.
Oh, thank you. Nobody can predict at this moment how much blue we need. Okay.
Which is why we did the preliminary screening of all the lands. And so, yeah, but, yeah, so if you want more lands included, we would need to figure that out.
And like Councilmember McCarthy already mentioned, the, the 1.7 acre is worth a lot of money, let alone 4.8. So, so, okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm, uh, Aaron, I'm looking at the Marina Northwest Corner Habitat Management Area. And that north to south parcel, the southern third of it, it looks like it's red to me, which means, uh, proposed impact.
Correct.
And I don't know that this council has ever, has ever uh, explicitly discussed this as whether we want it to remain beautiful, open habitat or we want it to be a shopping center or an auto mall or whatever. But I think this is the time we want to discuss this because we're looking for lands to develop and lands to set aside. And so I think there's something to be said for looking at this land that's visible from Highway One. And it's beautiful now. It's intact and really good habitat, except for a little fenced off area. So to me, if that was blue, what would, well, that we might have something more as far as a potential offset for development elsewhere. So if that was blue, uh, does it gain us anything in Gilead since it doesn't show Gilead there?
There isn't much Gilead habitat there at this time.
Is there any?
There's, and the red, the red circle.
Oh, the red circle. They're right about the middle. Okay. So I think that this council should know that if we don't change anything tonight, that piece of land is gonna be proposed for development in the future. And right now it's beautiful, open space, maritime chaparral, visible from Highway One. So if you want Highway One drivers to look down and see development or if you want them to see what's there now, that's kind of choice we're making right now. And I'm pointing to the southern third portion of the Marina Northwest Corner H M A. Uh, it has been proposed for Safeways and auto malls in the past, but it's never gotten very far. But by setting it aside for proposed development now, it's likely that future councils will develop that because we've set that aside for that. Now, the Del Monte Avenue extension shown here on Exhibit C is really to me a Crescent Street, Second Avenue connection. It's got nothing to do with Del Monte. It's a quarter mile away from Del Monte Boulevard. So it's not a Del Monte extension. It's a Crescent Street to Second Avenue extension or, you know, it's a Crescent Street extension or it's a Second Avenue extension. But it's not a Del Monte extension. And I would like us to consider, because of the hardship we've faced and the headwinds we faced trying to get Shoehorned Del Monte Avenue Extension where Gilead won't let it be, that we have a Fort Tag north to south dotted line to be a Del Monte Extension for pets and bikes. It's pets and bikes that need a Del Monte Boulevard extension. It's not cars. Cars have a 13-second drive from Rain Dollar to Imogen Parkway. Nobody in the city is saying, I want a better driving access to Imogen Parkway from Del Monte. It's the pets and the bicyclists that have a real trouble, an obstacle trying to get from downtown Marina to the former Ford Ord. So calling it a Del Monte Avenue Extension and requiring all the mitigation to make that happen when it doesn't even extend Del Monte Boulevard, who are we serving? Uh, we're serving people who are in the Crescent Street High School area who want to get to, uh, the Dune Shopping Area, but they're not that far away from Del Monte Boulevard. So I would like the council's weigh-in on putting a dotted line from Shell Station, Del Monte Boulevard to somewhere at Imogen Parkway like Second Avenue. And, and shoehorning that in, uh, between the Gilead with its minor impact compared to the impact of a Del Monte Extension which doesn't extend Del Monte. Um, so I have more, but the, those two pieces I'd like to discuss, you know, and that's my time for now. But that southern third, do we want it to be developed or do we want it to stay as it is? Of the North Marina Northwest Corner H M A. And do we like the Del Monte extension shown there? Or would we prefer a Fort Tag Trail that gets the pets and bikes from downtown Marina to former Ford Ord? We'll go to, uh, Councilmember McCarthy and then Vischer.
Um, so I'll, I'll bite on your, your question first and I totally agree. I think that's a really neat area to look down on. I, I enjoy it every time I, I drive into Marina, um, and would certainly support, um, pre- putting that into more preservation. Um, in terms of the, the bike path, of course, I'm always supportive of that. But I will say, I, what I've always heard is that this fear that Highway One will no longer be able to handle the traffic as traffic flows increase. And so there'll be a need for, um, additional roadway traffic. I don't know. There's probably experts in the room that could speak to that.
So, so Brian, just continuing on what you just said, how would the proposed alignment you see tonight?
It, and I agree, it wouldn't. Um, and I agree that it shouldn't be called the conceptual Del Monte Extension because it is not that. So moving on from that, um, I, uh, just another question, and I hate to circle back to the Home Two Suites, but if this council decides not to include that, what does that mean for, I, the, the property owner? You talked about jail, but I don't think that's gonna happen, but.
If he doesn't remedy the situation as outlined in the violation, which is to get his own I T P or to, um, uh, uh, be accommodated as a citywide I T P, he could face fines and jail, but hopefully he would go get his own I T P.
In, in your experience, when developers have been faced with that, what do they usually do? Go get their I T P or? Is it?
Yes, yes.
Okay. You, you know, when, my understanding, not being a biologist, when we list species, the hope is, is that one day they will become unlisted. We will preserve them enough. Will this ever happen to Gilead? Will Gilead ever become unlisted?
It's unlikely in our lifetimes, right, Brad?
Is it likely in anyone's lifetime?
I don't know. No, it's really, it's really, really rare.
So, I mean, that's conceptually very problematic for me. Uh, one more question. We, we did the red overpass through the kind of Del Monte area. Why couldn't we do something like that, um, to connect Imogen to the kind of equestrian center area? Would C D F W be frustrated if we added too many of those little rainbows, as you called it?
From Imogen to the equestrian center, um.
Yeah, so the city manager talked about, council had talked about putting kind of a, a access road from Imogen into that equestrian center cement plant area.
Okay.
Um, but the broader question is, is we have that one rainbow section, right, to connect the highway as an overpass? I mean, or would C F D, C D F W, C F W D be frustrated if we added a couple more of those?
Gosh, I feel like we looked at this. So the two triangle parcels on either side of our, our blue area are owned by others. So you would need to put the, either get a encroachment into those other properties or go through the blue area as you're suggesting. And I think where the city's blue area meets Imogen Parkway, there's some slope engineering issues that we looked at. So, um, you were kind of in a and there's a lot of Gilead on the other two parcels.
Okay, um, one more question regarding Tamsi. Um, and, and I consider Tamsi and the Home Two Suites to be two totally different, not to- different scenarios in the sense that Tamsi has a very public benefit, right? Whereas the other one is more of a commercial enterprise. Um, but the same question holds true. Do, do we have the option of not incorporating Tamsi into our, our plan? Is it the same thing? They would have to go get their own I T P or is that a different setup?
They're getting their own I T P. They'll be issued in a couple of weeks.
So they're doing that. So what are we being asked to approve regarding the Tamsi? I'm, I'm a little lost.
Their request, oh, sorry.
Todd might maybe be able to answer that a little bit more. Uh, they don't have property to mitigate. And, and it's my understanding, working with them, that all along their Fort Tag Trail, they're looking at the underlying land use jurisdictions that their Fort Tag Trail is going through, that they're looking for us to provide the mitigation because they don't, they don't have the land in our cities. And so it's my understanding, there'll be all the other cities that have Fort Tag going through there. That is their approach.
And let's ask Todd to come up and give Tamsi perspective. Or just say ditto what Lane said.
Almost ditto. Um, this, the Fort Tag Project is being done. Um, the, the interesting thing about Tamsi is we don't normally, we're not normally the lead on projects. We're the often just the funding partner and helping to plan and develop projects. So when you look at the Fort Tag Project, it's unique. And, um, the other example, where, there's lots of examples where Tamsi's been part of projects in Marina, but the, the roundabout San Andrew Parkway right now, where Tamsi's contributed, uh, 18 million of Measure X funds and helps leverage another 20 million of state grants for that project to be built. But we're not here, we're not, we weren't there when you were making this decision for habitat mitigation for that project. Um, in this case, we have a agreement with the city, a master agreement where Tamsi is developing the project and the city is the owner of the project.
developing the project and the city is the owner of the project when it's done. So the unique case here is if this was the city doing the project on its own, this would just be part of your, your discussion about the, the use of this property for mitigation, whereas now it's labeled as Tamsi property. And, um, we're just bringing in the $10 million to build the project and get it done on behalf of the public. So that's kind of the neat distinction, and that's why we look to the cities to help mitigate the projects.
And that's true with all of the land, is that all that land will potentially be city owned?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That helps explain that. Um,
Thanks, Todd.
Yeah, I think that's all I've got. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Uh, Todd, can you come back up? Um, I thought Brian might've had more, so I didn't want to take the floor from him. But there's a, I believe there's a Tamsi property nestled between Imogen Road and Imogen Parkway on the east side of the Las Anima site. There's a couple of power lines that run over it. Um, uh, if we can go to Exhibit C, let's see, let's see if it's on that one. Uh, yeah, it's kind of on that one. So on the one that's on the screen, okay, where are you going now? Exhibit? That you can, you can keep it there. That's, that's fine. As long as it shows kind of the junction of Imogen Road and Imogen Parkway. Does that do that there? That's Las Anima?
That, the triangle there?
Yeah.
That is Monarch City Transit's property.
Oh, it's MST. So Tamsi has no property right there?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Todd. I thought it was Tamsi, but it's MST. Okay, let's go to, uh, Mayor Bortem Visher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Tamsi does have some property in our city at First Avenue. Maybe there's some, anyway. But, um, that was not why I wanted to speak. I, I just want to let, like, you know, Mr. Mayor, I do agree with the, the Second Avenue and Del Monte Boulevard extension, connection, that if anything were to happen, it will be for pedestrians and bicy- bicyclist only. But I don't know how realistic even that is, uh, city manager. Have, have, have staff looked into that more seriously lately or consultants?
Good. Um, Kim Lee Horn, you looked at that, you did a high level, uh, look at that, and that kind of follows existing, um, roads and paths. And so it, yeah, it definitely is feasible. Kim Lee Horn looked at that. Um, they're also looking at it from the perspective of, of continuing the connection of Patton Parkway to, to Del Monte. One of the, one of the problems that, that we have, um, and Kim Lee Horn can help a lot more at this, but one of the problems is, is we just don't have a lot of connections from old Marina to the former Fort Ord, you know, property. And the only main connection right now is California. And you can see in the past couple of years, how much busier California has gotten and how much more busy it's going to get in the future. And so partly when Kim Lee Horn was looking at that, they're looking at the future that, that we just don't have any other, there's no other connection point. You come down California before you go down Highway One.
Yes. And, and you're talking about pedestrians and bicyclists, or also vehicles?
Vehicle.
Vehicles as well.
All of the above. So that, that's what Tamsi was, where Kim Lee Horn was looking at, and then, and we can have him come back and talk a little bit more.
Yes, that will be good, I think, too. Yes. And I, I did like seeing, I did like, yeah, seeing the, the crescent, the, the potential for an overpass in the future, maybe not in our lifetimes, or maybe yes. Because I do like the idea of, um, uh, splitting the, the traffic on Imogen Parkway. So the, everybody here knows what the, the plan is said to get the traffic coming from the north, have them exit on the new, to build, um, overpass and then connect to Second Avenue. So traffic on Imogen going south doesn't have to weave anymore. So I do like that plan, but it will cost a lot of money because making an overpass, I don't know how much, but it will be a lot. So, so these are more, um, remarks and yeah, and question, and the question is to please look, um, deeper into the connection for, between old Marina or central Marina and, sorry, new Marina. Thank you.
Thank you, Lizbeth. Councilmember Biola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I want to caution folks on saying that in terms of this, um, so-called Del Monte Extension Alternative Alignment, that, that it should only be for bikes and, uh, and pedestrians. I think, you know, I, I know we talked about the, uh, the, um, the car flow, the traffic flow, and whatever we develop in Cypress Knolls is going to add that much more, uh, you know, car travel and, 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 um, you know, sort of, uh, thinking that it doesn't matter, um, and that people will ride their bicycles more, I think is unrealistic. And I, I really hope that the city does a very serious traffic study, uh, if we intend to not have that be for automobiles. Um, and I'm as, as in favor of reducing, um, uh, you know, car travel in, in motorized travel in Marina, but it's already congested Imogen, as, as the city manager says, Imogen is already, um, you know, I'm not Imogen, uh, California is already severely impacted because people from the Dune, uh, Sea Haven enter out into that, plus everybody going to the high schools. And then if we develop Cypress Knolls, we're going to have even more. So we need to think about how we're going to mitigate that kind of, um, uh, demand for, um, traffic accommodations. Um, I also think that I hear what everyone's saying about the, uh, how do you call this area? The, the Marina Northwest Corner, uh, HMA, and the, the last, the bottom third of it looks like it has maybe one patch of, of, um, San Gilia, and that was slated for, um, development. Um, and, um, and I think it's, it's much more, uh, uh, realistic to say that that can be developed as opposed to putting it with, um, the other two areas. And I'm thinking of them as separate areas because they seem it because of the overpass situation there. But there, that already is, is a lot of land preserved for, um, for mitigation. So to me, um, making it, it, it blue, um, for preservation doesn't seem to make sense. We're already, I think, restricted in terms of that area. So for me, it's, it's an extension of the Cypress Knolls area, and it doesn't seem to have much problems with San Gilia. So I would not be likely saying that we might as well just make it for preservation. That's just my thought on this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Regarding the Del Monte Avenue need for an extension, uh, I see how this overpass idea would do that, and it would need to connect to something. So I see how that southern half of that, uh, labeled Del Monte Avenue extension could, could be necessary to connect to the overpass. And as Councilmember, Mayor Bortem says, you know, that could be a big price tag. I'm thinking it could be tens of millions of dollars to build an overpass, especially by the time it gets done. And it could be, you know, $10 million to build the rest of that, uh, south of there, where it would connect to this proposed extension. But just calling it a Del Monte extension, um, as, as a couple of people have noted, besides myself, it doesn't really make sense. Uh, although if you consider Patton Parkway going from west to east to get from the Shell Station to Crescent Street before you head south, you know, that is okay for cars, but it completely discounts the reality of a walker or a cyclist. You don't call that a Del Monte extension for, for, for non motorists because you don't, you can't expect them to walk or bicycle way east and then go way south. It looks great for cars, but it's not for, for bikes and Peds. So I still, whether, whatever we do with that road alignment, I think it's a separate issue than Peds and cyclists. They are in dire need of connecting old Marina with new Marina, and that conceptual alignment for cars does not address that need. So while we don't want to only rely or think about bikes and Peds, we would completely be discounting bikes and Peds and saying we are not a bike-friendly city if we don't give them a reasonable connection between old and new. So if you put it a dotted line, as four tag is represented elsewhere on this map, from Shell Gas Station to Second Avenue, I think that our experts can devise the mitigation strategy for that. And I think part of that solution, and in agreement with Kathy Biola, Councilmember Biola, would be leaving some of that red portion of the Northwest Corner HMA red, so that it could be, but, but that we could have the rest of it, let's say, west of that road extension. Do you see what I mean? Where that proposed extension is, west of there is about two thirds of that southern portion and includes the Gilia and is very beautiful and is visible from Highway One. If that turned blue, that would allow you to put a four tag trail north to south with some impact to Gilia and still keep some of that southern portion that Councilmember Biola is suggesting needs to be kept for proposed development options. But it would be so far away from Highway One, it wouldn't be the, the blight look of development next to a beautiful area as, you know, seaside's shopping centers look and, you know, it would just, it would, it would be a little bit inset, you know? So you wouldn't really see it as much. You'd see green between it and the highway, which is a beautiful thing to see. So I still would like to see, repeating myself, a line, a dotted line for four tag from Shell Gas Station to Second Avenue, and some of that portion, some of that red area turn blue, uh, so that it could be protected for various reasons. Uh, that's all I got. Uh, except one other thing regards, something that Councilman McCarthy said earlier, whether those equestrian trails are needed for the future or not. I think the city, uh, needs to have a policy before we go to CDFW and say, hey, you know what? The Equestrian Center is kind of up in the air. If it, if we don't lose anything by leaving them in, I wouldn't want to go to CDFW before we have a policy agreement that, yeah, it's likely we're going to ditch the Equestrian Center for equestrian uses. So let's go ahead and tell CDFW that. I don't want to give them any, any reason to, to doubt what we're proposing tonight, unless we all agree that, you know, equestrian's going away. With the closure of equestrian centers everywhere else, I think it makes it more likely for Marina's equestrian use to be viable. We just haven't done a very good job marketing it. Nobody who lives here, nobody who comes here and visits knows we have equestrian opportunities. You didn't see it in any of the Sea Monterey presentation, but you put horses in Sea Monterey advertising or marketing, that's unique. They're looking for something to do for Pebble Beach golfers that's different than golf, or they're looking for something for car racers other than car racing. Why not come horseback riding? And where else do you get that? So I'm not yet ready to say it's a dead horse, uh, to have equestrian center use there, but maybe it is. So we should have that discussion maybe at a future meeting. Um, but I do hope that part of our input to staff tonight is getting a four tag trail south of Shell Station and not developing the entire piece of that southern HMA area that's so beautiful next to the highway and includes some Gilia.
To the mayor, if, if I could respond to that. Um, so just, just to provide some context. So that southerly piece in the 2000 general plan was identified as commercial in the draft general plan. That's also carried forward. Uh, when this council had a joint meeting with the planning commission about Cypress Knolls, one of the key takeaways from that joint meeting, and we had the retired planning directors come do the charrette. One of the key directives from the council was to make sure that Cypress Knolls was fiscally neutral, and that southerly red piece, keeping that commercial ensures that the Cypress Knolls development will be fiscally neutral. Um, so to, to depart from that, that would be a, uh, and then the draft general plan map and the EIR that we're actually undertaking has that property as commercial. So obviously the council has full discretion, but there is some, some background in terms of keeping that, uh, potentially commercial. And there are, there are already some ongoing initiatives in terms of keeping that area commercial. So I just, I just wanted to provide some context.
So Guido, I'm a little confused because when we had the general plan draft discussions, and you wanted to go forward with the EIR, so you needed a, a land map showing development areas and set aside areas. There were large areas such as east of the Equestrian Center that were proposed for development. And some of us and Dr. Watson were saying, wait a minute, wait a minute, you're proposing to develop really good habitat areas. And you said, yeah, well, just let us go through the EIR process and we'll figure all this out in the EIR process. Tonight, we're seeing that east of the Equestrian Center is no longer being proposed for development here tonight as it was during the draft general plan process. So if we can.
So, so there, so there's, there's a little bit of a distinction there. So I think just to clarify what, what we said when we brought the draft general plan map is that, you know, we did need some level of analysis to do the EIR. And I thought we were pretty clear to say when individual projects came, we would work with Erin and her firm to make sure that any species habitat were protected as part of that specific development project. So th- those are two different kind of paths. One's a programmatic EIR, one's an individual project for an individual parcel. So those are two different levels.
Right. So the programmatic EIR that you're embarking on right now had east of the Equestrian Center basically red for develop, proposed development, but tonight is basically blue for set aside. So that changed.
Well, I'm, I'm not speaking to, I'm speaking to the parcel.
I know. I'm just saying that we already have a precedent tonight where for the first time, we're seeing the east area of the Equestrian Center blue. Last time we did the general plan draft, it was red. It was being proposed for development.
Yeah, if you want to clarify.
Um, we're not proposing a change in land use as part of this ITP. We're trying to get a thumbs up that this is the way the city wants to move forward. If this results in a change in the general plan and land use designations and zoning later, then we will take that on. An important thing to consider when, um, setting aside land for conservation is that if it's not, if it's already set aside in conservation, it's not worth as much to CDFW. You'll have a higher lift, um, to do mitigation at that site. So we want to be showing that we're taking things out of development, not overlying conservation.
Right. So I'm getting confused because we're not doing that with the east portion of the Equestrian Center. Tonight, we're taking it out of development.
Not taking anything out of development right now. We're proposing to put it in preservation. Whether that's what happens in the future is unknown.
Okay. So whatever we're doing east of the Equestrian Center, I would like to do west of the proposed extension that's next to Highway One. It would be a similar situation where several months ago, we said in the draft general plan that the Equestrian Center East and that HMA area would be open for development. And tonight we're saying, we're leaning, we're leaning toward change for the Equestrian Center. And I would like to say the same thing for that piece that's next to Highway One, that we're leaning toward, whatever the right words are. Do you see how I'm getting them, seeing them at the same level? Because at the general plan draft, we said something different than we're saying tonight. Uh, Councilmember Biola?
Okay. I.
On to what I just said, because Brian's waiting and Lizbeth's waiting. I'm done.
I think, I see them as two very different scenarios. I think you're, 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 you know, equating the two of them, you know, as the same principle. And I don't think that. I think that we have, um, had many more ideas of development on the, the, the Marina Northwest HMA versus the Equestrian Center one. So I, I don't see them as, as the same. I mean, Equestrian Center has large areas that we still have not even sort of contemplated what the development could be. Um, and so I don't, I don't see that making a decision on, on the Equestrian Center, uh, relates directly to the other property.
I agree. I was saying that structurally, the way we're discussing them is the same. Four months ago, we said red on the Equestrian Center. Tonight, we're saying we're leaning blue. Just in that regard, they're similar. As far as what we proposed in the HMA, I can't think of anything we proposed in the HMA. There's no plan for the HMA. How it relates to the development or, 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 or dollar balance in the Cypress Knolls, I don't really understand that concept right now. Cypress Knolls is going to be sold to a developer. They're going to build, you know, a development plan. And how that's dependent on commercializing that HMA southern area, I don't understand that concept right now.
Are you saying what, um, Guido has talked about in terms of the value of that land in order to support whatever we do on Cypress Knolls for housing?
Correct. Yeah, I don't understand that. I understand that Cypress Knolls, 188 acres, and that can be developed between the city and a developer. I understand that Cypress Knolls, 188 acres, and that can be developed between the city and a developer. No matter what we do on that southern portion, Guido?
Yeah, just to clarify, so when the CPAP group came and spoke once again, and that report is on the city website. A key finding of that takeaway from the commission and council was to ensure that Cypress Knolls was fiscally neutral. Cause generally residential projects are a loss for the city. And so that portion is really important to maintain as commercial. Uh, to not preserve it so that we can ensure that the overall fiscal health of the city is maintained. As part of the overall development of Cypress Knolls. And we've been operating under that premise, at least for the four years that I've been with the city. So that, that, that's the, the fiscal piece that I've, and I don't want to sidetrack the whole conversation. I just wanted to, because we're, this is a really, I'm, I'm helping with the Cypress Knolls projects. I'm kind of focused on that, but I don't want to hijack the whole conversation.
Okay, let's go to Councilor McCarthy and then Mayor Protem and then Councilor Biola.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so just to be clear, we're going to. Someone eventually, maybe me is going to make a motion that we accept the report. And then we're going to provide like we often do input kind of direction, if you will. Um, okay. I just want to circle back to the equestrian use real quick. I, part of that input would definitely be to really understand the leverage, if any, that we are, are talking about in regards to those paths. And I just want to remind the council that it was this council that decided to disallow equestrian use on our Hilltop Park, which was otherwise allowed. It was this council that several months ago voted to remove horse stables from properties of over an acre in the city of Marina. It was this council that has had a five year problematic relationship with vendors, trying to maintain the viability of the equestrian use. So, um, while I appreciate and agree with you, Mayor, that, uh, and, and nobody champions the equestrian use more than me. I, I love it. I hope that we can keep it in perpetuity. I just think that realistically, the writing's on the wall. Um, and so I think that if we're losing leverage there, we, I think that we need to understand that because we need to understand. What that really means. And that's probably hard to quantify, um, but a staff can take a stab at it. Um, it, it would be really appreciated and helpful. As part of any direction that we give, I just want to emphasize that I would like to see that the Salinas River HMA be recognized as a special, unique habitat area. That deserves to be experienced by the public and that we place efforts on ways that we can memorialize how to do that. And then this one's going to be tricky, but, and our role is having a fiduciary duty to 20,000 plus people. I'm really torn on how we handle the Doddwell property. I, to, to kind of say. Oh, you messed up, but we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna make it okay, um, at the cost of, you know, significant. Loss to the 20,000 people we represent. I'm just really struggling with that. Um, so I would like to have staff come back with some kind of fiduciary fiscal analysis of. Kind of what, what we're doing there, what that decision means, um, and our role as fiduciaries. Um, so I can either start a motion or I'm happy to pass it to someone who might be more passionate about, about starting that motion.
Uh, let, hear from Kathy and Elizabeth, and then we'll come back to you at that point, Brian. Mayor Protem Fisher and then.
Yes, and I'll be happy to let somebody else make this motion. But, um, we are discussing the citywide ITP. So I can see the mayor's, um, remarks about, hey, if we can, if we can change colors. At the east of the equestrian center, why can we not look at the whole city now? And, um, so maybe we can have a compromise and have a, a sliver of blue on the west side. Still have the, the nice nature to see from highway one, because that is something that our city is different than. The city south from us and, um, and still have the commercial area to hopefully make it, uh, fiscally neutral. Um, anyway, that's, um, and one, my last remark is about the equestrian center. Now that we can discuss this openly, um, a couple of weeks ago, I was there and there were people, Dutch people, by the way, they were on vacation in the Bay Area. And they came to our equestrian center because they Googled where they could go for a horse ride. And they came to us, so. So I'm more optimistic than Councilmember McCarthy, well, time will tell. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Elizabeth. Councilmember Biola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like, um, Mayor Protem's idea about the compromise. I think that's, you know, that makes a lot of sense in terms of that, the, the last, I don't know how to describe these, the last portion of the. The, um, HMA, M, H, yes, the Northwest, whatever. Um, also I would, uh, like to ensure that we have a, um, a very specific traffic study. Um, with also the ability to increase, um, bicycle and pedestrian, um. Connections between the new and the old Marina, if you will. Um, I, I also have concerns with how we would treat the Doddwell park property because it is proprietary. But they have contributed significantly to our bottom line in revenues. So I don't see this just as a mere property that we're enhancing a private person. Um, and I would want to make sure, and I don't know, may, maybe the city can make some analogies of why we would treat the Doddwell. Uh, 1.7 differently than the 4.8 TAMC property, um, in, in how we. Either, uh, not support one and support the other in terms of, um, financial impact to our city. And that's. And, and also of course, you know, looking at giving some very broad, uh, cost analysis for us. On some of the things we talked about tonight. Thank you, Ms.
Okay. Councilor McCarthy, I had five things that I wanted to suggest for a motion, but if you want to get it started, you can.
Microphone, please.
Thank you. I'll move that we receive the presentation as, um. Illustrating on the screen now. Um, and then we provide input on the conceptual mitigation strategy for the citywide ITP. Um, and that that input is as follows, one. We recognize that the Salinas River HMA is a unique habitat area that deserves to be experienced by the public. And we ask staff to come back with some ideas how we can accomplish that. Salinas River Habitat Management Area. Did I say that right?
Yes.
I'm a good dub sometime to write that. Thank you for hearing that, Doug. Recognize Salinas River Habitat Management Area. Is a unique area that deserves evaluation, deserves.
To be evaluated.
Be evaluated for public access. To, um. That we understand the leverage we lose by making the ask of the trails of the equestrian center. And that doesn't have to be too in-depth, but just a, you know. Staff can come back with a report that they find is appropriate. Three. That we understand our role as a fiduciary regarding the Doddwell property. And our. I'll just leave it at that. Thinking staff understands where I'm going with that. And those are the three that I had. Um, if I can get a second, I'm happy to accept an amendment.
Second. Let's go to Councilmember Biola.
Yeah, are you not including what, what in your motion, the things that, um, Mayor Protem and I just added?
I, why don't you go ahead, Kathy, and suggest a friendly amendment, because so far he hasn't mentioned those.
Oh, okay, friendly amendment. Um, okay, um, so I, I would like, um, Mayor Protem to say yours.
Regarding the, uh, southern portion of the Northwest HMA.
Right, I have staff look into.
Changing, can I say red to blue now? Changing the commercial area in the Northwest corner bordering highway one. Into a conservation area.
A small.
For a small portion. Yeah, that needs to be first.
While allowing for the eastern portion of that southern area.
Yeah, changing the commercial area. The western part of the commercial area, change the western parts of the commercial area.
To conservation.
To conservation, yeah. If you can please add.
In your previous, that may help you, it said balance between commercial development on the corridor. And view areas on the corridor and come back with the.
Come back with, yes.
Balance between maintaining the views and the commercial aspects.
Did you get over it?
He, he, he's working on it, so let's give him some time.
Yeah, sorry, Doug, it's change the western part of the commercial area. It's confusing because it's the, yeah, change the western part. Yeah. Yeah. Best part of the commercial area. Change the western parts. It is, can you, oh, change the western part. Of the commercial area.
Or Chief, how about we say change the southwestern part of the Northwest HMA? Change the southwestern part of the Northwest HMA.
To conversation, that's it, yeah.
Okay, so that's the friendly amendment suggested. Does the motion maker accept that?
And then that's my thing.
And then.
But I didn't finish mine.
Right, we're just doing one friendly amendment at a time.
One at a time, okay.
I think I was the second, so the second holds. Go ahead, Kathy.
Okay, so this one would be to, uh, to come back with a, a detailed traffic study. Uh, for that area, uh, the, for the conceptual Del Monte Extension Alternative Alignment Pathway or. Road, I should just call it a road that also makes allowance connections, but allows the, uh, uh, four tag connection or. Some kind of a trail, four tag trail to, to possibly go along there to.
Yeah, I don't want it to go along there. I think just, if we could just separate it, just keep what you have under number two for now. And then the third one could be evaluate the placement of a four tag trail from Del Monte Boulevard to Second Avenue.
Second Avenue, okay. All right, so there's two separated amount, okay?
I have a just clarification on that. When, when you talk about four tag trails, I think earlier you talked about a separate bike and.
Ped, which is four tag.
Okay, so you're, I guess I was thinking like a separate little trail for like e-bikes and, and stuff like that and separate from.
No, just a four tag trail, right, which is primarily pads and bikes. Okay, so does the friend, does the motion maker accept amendment number three? Okay, and the second holds. Then I have one more. Okay, go ahead, Kathy.
And to estimate, broadly estimate the cost for TAMC combined joint mitigation strategy. Is that, is that the right way to word this?
Yeah, that's, that sounds good, well worded. Yeah, and the reason my second won't hold on that is because I think we've already passed this point. TAMC has already come to us and said, hey, council. Can we trust that we can go ahead together as partners on this? And we said yes, and so now they went forward. So I don't think that we can second guess or take back that.
Well, they are, are, um, are committing 2. something million to the project, right? But there may be other costs associated beyond that that we have to assume.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about this land discussion we have tonight. They need mitigation for the project that we've already agreed to give them mitigation when they asked us. So I don't think we can evaluate what it's worth and take it back. I'm not sure why we would evaluate it if we weren't thinking of making more deals with them. Or taking back what we've already agreed to.
If there are other anticipated costs that we can identify that go in over and beyond this particular.
Okay, okay. So you manage it?
Yeah, TAMC really has a, a tight timeline on this. Um, and so if we, this other stuff's going to take a while. And I, I think they, they need some clearer direction on that, because, um, we may. Delay the trail or the funding part of it so that time is critical. But the other part, I want to be sure that everyone understood is, is the mitigation area TAMC is going to be providing the long-term. Cost for, for mitigating that area. And so that's a cost that they're going to, um.
What do you mean, long-term cost of mitigating?
So that 4.8 areas, um, that's going to be in a conservation easement. TAMC is in perpetuity going to provide the funding for the maintenance and monitoring.
For the maintenance and monitoring.
Okay, I understand. I'll withdraw that then. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll take off number four. Okay, does anyone have any others? I think you, you both ended up hitting all of mine. Um, it's a little bit controversial, I guess, what I'm going to say, but regarding the Dodd, Doddwall property. I mean, if it's true, if it's accurate, that for the last six years. We've got 1.5 million or more from hotel number one. And if it's true that since home two is opening, has opened, we're getting about $1 million a year. And if it's true that the third hotel that the Doddwall partnership expects is going to bring in two to three million a year. I'm wondering if it's not too controversial for this council to ask city staff and Doddwell. To work on those details to disclose to us in the near future. How much tax revenue we've been getting and expect to get. Because he, Harvey Doddwell, is very open book about his tax revenue. It's not like, you know, it's, it's voluntary information. We, Lane can't tell us, even though Lane knows, he can't tell us how much those hotels are bringing to the city. But the owner of the hotels can tell us, he's an open book, anyone wants to ask him, he's very proud of how much tax revenue his cities, his hotels have generated. The reason I say that is because if these hotels are bringing Marina tens of millions of dollars. That matters when we're talking about helping them with mitigation. It's not like, you know, a, a little boutique store that's asking us for something. But I don't know that that's true. I just have a hunch that it's true. And so I don't know if this council will not just say, um. Well, let me ask the council, would it be okay if we ask staff to ask the hotels for verifiable records of how much? Tax revenue, the two hotels have brought the city and how much is expected the third hotel is going to bring the city? So we know what we're dealing with, when we're going to maybe nickel and dime him. On the value of the 1.7 acre mitigation. So we know that that might be worth $3 million, the mitigation, once we, once Aaron tells us or someone tells us. But he's bringing in tens of millions that might matter before we say, hey, we want to, we want a market rate negotiation here for that 1.7 acres. So let me just open that up to council.
I guess my question would be, would we want to include the loss of several million dollars over the last couple of years for the? The hotel he was supposed to build that is behind schedule? I mean, does that take away from that or how are we doing speculation?
No, because if he didn't build that, nobody else could either.
Well, that's not, that's speculation, I think.
Um, well, no one else has yet built a hotel on Fort Ork.
Right, because we gave him the opportunity and he's two years behind on the development schedule.
So you're saying, no, I don't think we'd want to.
So yeah, for me, I'm not really interested in the, the, it's a, it's a, it's a valid, I understand where you're going, but I think it's just a can of worms. And I don't know that we want to open, that's where I stand.
Yeah. Uh, Councilmember McCanns?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure whatever process you're making up, that it would be like a, a, a city process. That would be extended to future people. And, and for me, it just sounds complicated. I mean, and if someone were to have to mitigate in the future, but not have a hotel, then how do we give them concessions and a discount or whatever? So I just would want to make sure that whatever. give them concessions and a discount or whatever? So I just would want to make sure that whatever process we're creating that it's equitable and fair.
Yeah, I think it's similar to what we do with Mercedes. We estimated what they're going to bring in and we, anyway, good point, well taken. Our city attorney has some input.
No, I was just going to comment that maybe number three is broad enough to include some of the comments and questions you've had regarding these issues.
Councilmember Biala?
I'm in full agreement with what the mayor just said, and I would like to hear, you know, in terms of estimates for, for his contributions to the city's revenues, which is pretty significant, I think. In terms of, maybe it's hearsay, but it seems like the HDL reports also point to that. And we can find TOT statistics. I think C Monterey probably has all of that as well. So I want to balance that out. I don't think that this is one of those things that has been an intentional, you know, deception or anything like that. And I think we have done from the theaters to the Mercedes to, you know, to in this case with the Dodwell property. I think, you know, we, we look at this in terms of the value of, of the city in economic terms too. So I, I don't see that this is, you know, something that we have to, to, to now, you know, kind of single him out as this is where we stop doing these things for private enterprises, is my thought on this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so the city attorney has opined that that's within the realm of what we've already, well, let's say, let's go back to the motion. The, we understand our role as a fiduciary in regards to the Dodwell property. Okay. And I think that Lane already has all the information. It's just whether the private owner wants to release that to the public, and I think he would in a heartbeat. But it wouldn't be him giving us the information. It would be him giving permission to Lane to release information Lane already has.
Great. I have one other thought about that, if I may, Mr. Mayor, is that it, it may, it may be that we don't do an all or nothing, that we do expect some contributions from Dodwell in this mitigation. So we should be open to that.
And to find that, and to find that resting place, having the big picture might help us.
Yes, thank you.
And, and I guess we can have this discussion when it comes back to us, but in, in understanding the data, I mean, are we saying kind of for the future, if someone else wants to build on habitat area that, you know, if, as long as they're bringing in a certain amount of TOT, that that's good, or?
Yeah, I think we take every situation like Mercedes or Dodwell or Kaiser on it, you know, we take it case by case and we look at the big picture.
I'm, I'm struggling with that process, but I, I look forward to, I guess, having a discussion when it comes back.
Mr. Mayor, may I say something to that?
Elizabeth's been very patient. Let's go to her and then back to Councilmember Biala.
It's okay. I just wanted to say, we, we, in our consent agenda, we receive the quarterly reports. You can look up the TOT for the, you know, the hotels, all the hotels and kind of figure out. But I, I do agree that if there is a policy, it needs to be general for everybody. And of course, if, if a hotel brings in a lot of TOT, they probably also have a lot of profit, I hope. So we go on, it's, it's, it's a slippery slope, I think, to, to, to do anything with our public's money. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Councilmember Biala?
Saying that our policy should prevent someone who wants to build and consciously or, or intentionally decides to build where there's sand gilia, I don't think that that's a character, a, a true characterization of of this situation. So I just want to be kind of clear about that. Unless I'm, I'm saying, speaking out of turn, but that is not the kind of scenario that we would make a policy about. That if, that developer wants to build on a property where they know there's sand gilia and disregard that, then we would have this kind of stance. I, unless proven otherwise, I don't think that that characterizes the situation here.
Okay. All right, any other comments, questions, or we go to a vote? We don't have to read the motion again, or Shep, or the public. It's here on the screen. So seeing none, let's, Councilmember Biala?
Dodwell doesn't have two Ls, I don't believe.
Well, it's wall.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. The city, city attorney, and then we'll
Yes, just on number three, perhaps, just to make it a little clearer, is it what, what was meant at the end to say we understand our role as a fiduciary in regards to the Dodwell property violation? Is that what?
Sure. Yes. I think it's the Dodwell need for an ITP.
Well, look, I'll, I'll leave it, Bob, and what it would potentially cost to to mitigate it offsite somewhere else, just to get a sense of that overall value. I mean, we will be coming back to the council in the near future with with the hotels and the whole discussion of that. And so either our December 16th meeting or, or Nick being in January, we'll be coming back with a long discussion of that.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, it doesn't have to be part of my motion, but I mean, if this is common practice, if we, if cities do this kind of thing, that would be helpful to know, right? But if, if, if there's not a single example that staff can come where this happens, that, that would be helpful to know as well.
Councilmember McAdams, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. On, on number three, can you put what ITP stands for? Okay.
It's an international trust pension. Okay, Councilmember Biala, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask again. I thought I heard that this joint mitigation strategy is a little unique. I just need to, just, I thought I heard that.
CDFW provided us with a couple ITPs where this approach was used. So we could understand their roles and responsibilities and how those laid out.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I neglected to note that we had a detailed letter from the California Native Plant Society. And one of their points we haven't covered was in a couple places, they're, they're urging a mechanism be identified for remediation, funding in perpetuity, maintain, maintenance in perpetuity. So Aaron, as far as in cost in perpetuity, the direction we're going, when do we ensure that that's included? When do we ensure that what we're doing does have a funding mechanism to maintain it in perpetuity?
The ITP, both the Fortag ITP and the citywide ITP will require the permanent applicant to set up an endowment that formulates the interim and long-term costs over time, and that ensures that the habitat management is funded.
Okay, and has there been an issue where drafts up to this point haven't been available for public review and input prior to adoption? We haven't adopted anything, right?
No, we haven't even written the application.
So it says as the ITP continues to evolve, that we make, we make drafts available to the public. That's already going to happen?
Um, we haven't discussed that, no. I don't think that, um, that's
Did you see the letter?
No.
From Nikki Neto?
No.
Uh, number seven, it says, as the ITP continues to evolve, subsequent drafts should be available for public review and input prior to adoption by the city and eventual certification by CDFW. I guess that's kind of our process already, right?
Right. I mean, typically, when the city submits a ITP application to the state, it's a publicly available document. We don't have plans to come to council and get input on it. That's why we're here for the mitigation strategy, is so that we can set it all up and get the application in.
So when we adopt the IDP, we don't see it here.
You don't adopt an ITP. City, uh, CDFW issues the ITP. The action on your part comes when you record the conservation easement and approve resolutions associated with that at a later date, once the ITP is issued. CDFW does not issue draft ITPs prior to issuing them, so they don't let the applicant read the draft ITP, for example.
To get an ITP, we have to apply for one, right?
Yes, we do.
And when we apply for one, it has all the language in it that we want. And we hope that CDFW is going to thumbs up. So will this council see that application before it gets sent to CDFW?
There are no plans to do that at this time, although it sounds like we're coming back with the conceptual mitigation strategy as amended and some other information. So I think you'll have more idea what is in that application.
All right, so there wouldn't be any surprises in the application if one were to be following up to that point?
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Biala?
Yeah, I almost forgot one, one other condition here. So I'd like to have the, the city staff explore the possibility of alternate lands outside of the city for mitigation. And then I would like
One, one second, Kathy, if that's part of the motion.
Yes, go ahead.
I think that's a huge lift to ask staff to do. They're going to go outside the city and start to grow through a plus.
No, there, let me just define it. There's one particular entity that says they have land that could be used for mitigation for the city of Marina. And you are aware of that. I don't want to say it because it was, it was just told to me informally, I, but I want the city staff to research that particular one.
How about we say of a location outside of the city?
That's super awkward. I want to know, like.
I don't know, I'm at liberty to say, but I know that it is, could be available.
Okay, how about a possibility of a mystery location? So Miss Lane, our city manager, Lane Long, has
I, I think in general terms, like there are some major public educational institutions, and there's a lot out here, whether it be CSU, be UC.
MPUSTE.
And, and, and we can certainly reach out to them and just see if they have options of land that they can potentially. And we can
Okay, so Brian, Councilwoman McCarthy, it's your motion. What do you think about number four?
Sure.
Okay, so second holds. So now I think
Wait, wait, and then the second part to it is for us to consider if we have mitigation enough to turn the, the, I don't know, how do you describe this? This one piece in Cypress Knolls to a, a development area.
The southern of two polygons?
These are polygons, yes.
The southern, the southern gilia polygon in Cypress Knolls?
Because it has the lesser amount. And if we have ability to mitigate for that, then I would like to know what the possibilities are, if it's even possible.
Does everyone understand what she's referring to? It's an exhibit.
Yes, and it might be, it might be swapped with a sliver. There you go.
Okay.
Just see, just to, just to look at it, to, to know all the possibilities for us, because I am concerned about those two pieces right in the middle of Cypress Knolls.
Mountain bikes, dog, exercisers.
And it's, it's reducing it only probably by a third, so it's not, it's not one of the highly gilia, sand gilia areas.
And I'm happy to accept that. I guess I'd have a brief question, and maybe it was already covered, but if, if that was preservation area and we did our best to preserve it, and despite all of that, people, I mean, are we held accountable? Maybe that's a question for Aaron.
We, I ask that. We are, absolutely. Which is why I'm suggesting
Measure of like due diligence, I mean.
It's not you tried, it's you failed or you succeeded.
A plane crashes into lock pad and
Right, but we identified that piece as we are going to use this as a mitigation. We, we will decide that at some point.
That's not my question. My question is, is there any level of this, the city literally went out of their way, did everything they can, and a meteor hit it, right? Like, we're still responsible? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, if a meteor Not a meteor, but
There's, there's like catastrophic events and unforeseen circumstances that are addressed in a ITP. But I, I feel like your question is more of is, is if the mitigation failed, and yes, you'd have to go through adaptive management strategies and, you know, we're coordinating with CDFW to, to fix it, and that might be finding additional land or not being able to impact one of the areas that you wanted to impact.
Okay, thank you. I'm happy to accept that.
Thank you.
Okay. Everybody's okay? Good to go to a vote? Thank you, Chief McCowen for doing this, recording on the screen for us. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, please say no. All right, that passed unanimously with the five of us. Thank you, Aaron, Fred, Todd, the TMC team. Thank you for being here. Angie Scott Waltz was here. He has done a lot over the decade for Fortag. We appreciate that, Scott. And thanks to all the department directors for being here, and Shep for being our secretary tonight as city clerk.
We have an urgency ordinance maybe to cover? No, I thought that was pulled.
So we didn't need, didn't need a second reading.
Roger.
So, okay, thank you.
All right, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Mayor, mayor? You were going to
We're going to adjourn in honor of Patty Sadler Bradshaw. May she rest in peace.